All right, I would like to call to order the July 15th Milford City Council meeting. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, will you please call the rule?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
All right, I think the room shows the love and admiration that everyone has for this gentleman sitting out here. I know that my father-in-law served on council with him, and when I joined council, he just said, "Listen to Mike Manier." So, I tried to do that. That was his big advice.
You did anyway.
So, I think Chief Mills, you're going to come up for a presentation? Mr. Manier, do you want to join him at the podium?
Thank you, Honor, Your Honor, rather. How about this audience here? I mean, take a look around. We've got former coworkers, former mayors. I see Lou Bishop, Amy Velardo, former council members. Judge Haddad is in attendance tonight. I have to point out my first police chief, Dan Chilton, in the room tonight, city manager, Jeff Wright, and many, many other dignitaries, far too many for me to mention, but we're all here tonight to dedicate the Milford City Council chambers to the exemplary career of our retired law director, Mike Manier. It's an honor for me to speak about Mike, as he's been a longtime mentor and friend. I remember the day I met him. It was on October 24th, 1994, when he administered my oath of office. Over the next three decades, he was someone I could depend on for sound advice. He'd always qualify his advice with, "You're free to do what you want. If you take my legal advice and it goes south, I'll take the blame. If not, you're on your own." I always took his advice, and it served me well. Assistant Chief Sean Mahan used to call it the Manier Shield. I suppose now we have the Pacheco prophylactic.
You think I'm touching that one?
Most of us know what a law director does, but a municipal law director, also sometimes called a solicitor, is the chief legal advisor and attorney for a city or village. They represent the municipality and its officers in legal matters, and also often serve as the prosecutor. Over Mike's 44-year career, he provided legal advice and guidance to the city's elected officials, department heads, and other municipal employees. He reviewed and approved contracts, ordinances, and other legal documents to ensure they were legally sound. He represented the city in court in other legal proceedings, including lawsuits, administrative hearings, and criminal prosecutions. I estimate that he prosecuted over 90,000 cases in Milford Mayor's Court over his 44 years. He ensured the city stayed compliant with state regulations and laws, and was involved in drafting ordinances and resolutions for city council. In essence, Mike served as the city's legal expert and advocate, safeguarding its interest in all legal matters. But beyond that, he also served as a personal attorney for many city employees who reached out for help in their private lives. It would be impossible to summarize all of Mike's contributions and accomplishments. The only way to truly recognize his impact is naming this room the Michael Manier City Council Chambers. It's almost time for us to listen to Mike again, but I'd like to present him with a token to commemorate this momentous occurrence. A gavel with the inscription of "The Michael Manier City Council Chambers, dedicated on July 15th, 2025."
I remember when Fred Gatch had that when he was mayor and he broke it. I know you've got a long meeting, and I will be short.
When does that ever happen? I know we all want to get out of here and watch the ballgame or whatever. I originally had this scheduled for about 30 minutes because I was going to cover all the stuff that I was involved in over my 44 years, but since I know it's a long meeting, I knocked it down to about five or six minutes. So, if you indulge... So, if you indulge me, Honorable Mayor Evans, wish Jack were here to share this with us, honorable counsel, I appreciate it, manager Gunderson, law director, the Black Lamborghini Pacheco. And if you don't remember that reference, when I was here at a previous meeting, I said when Brian took over for me as law director, it was like trading in a Model T for a Lamborghini. And, of course, Jackie the Coat Bane, COAT clerk of all time. She's amazing. Her minutes were like transcripts. You know, there'd be a council meeting where I'd say something stupid or unintelligible, and I'd read the minutes, and I'd look halfway lucid. I'd like to introduce my family. My daughter Allison, my grandson, superstar, future UC Bearcat Benjamin, my son-in-law, Ryan, the two guys who have the Herculean job of keeping me, my ego in check, which is not easy, Scott and Philip. For example, when I was talking about what I was going to say tonight, I said, "You know, I'm going to try to make it so it's not all about me." And they said, "Why start now?" So, that's where they're coming from. You know, if this were going to happen, it should be this council chamber, because I have spent so much time here. As a matter of fact, if I knew this was going to happen, I would have retired sooner. I have spent so much time in this room and its predecessor down on high, two council meetings for many years, two mayor's courts every year, planning commission meetings, Board of Zoning Appeal hearings, meetings, meetings, meetings. In my conservative estimate, I've probably attended 2,100 meetings at least in this room or the one down on high. I feel comfortable in this room. It's like my office away from my office. So, if we're going to happen, I am so pleased that it's happening here. All I really ever could hope for is that my picture would eventually be on the wall, but I didn't want that to happen too soon, because I know the prerequisite to get there. The people laughing know it as well. So, if you'll please indulge me for five minutes, and then I will be out of your hair. And there's just a brief, brief story of how I got here. I'm 29 years old, barely out of law school for four years, when the late, great Harry Hodges walked in my office on Lila Avenue and sat down. Harry was the city solicitor at the time. Harry says, "Mike, I'm going to be..." "Don't worry about it." He said, "What you..." "But for the next 44 years..." "...more than our fair share of tsunamis." And it was amazing, because for, except for a really dark period of time for a couple years in the mid-'90s, it was always challenging, even fun. Above all, rewarding. Rewarding then... Passionate and truly loved the community in which they lived and worked. You all realize that, because you're doing it now. Most of these people back here did that as well. They were passionate about what they did, and they truly loved Milford because it was a community in which we lived and worked. In closing, several years ago, I was privileged to receive the chief's com... Chief Mills. Jamie knows, he was in... It has an honored place on my wall at the office. I related that time to an occasion many years before when I was given an award, and I went up to accept it. I went on, how I did not deserve it. And I can... Took me aside and said, "Enough to receive an award in the future. Never, ever say you don't deserve it, because even if you don't, the people that gave it to you think that you did, and you're just insulting them." I'm just going to say I'm honored, and what he said, "Just say that you're honored. Do you appreciate it? Say thank you, and sit the hell down and shut up." So, I'm not going to say that I don't deserve this. I'm deeply profounded, honored, and humbled that you think that I do. I just know that it would not have been possible but for the support and friendship of all the amazing mayors, council members, managers, staff, and employees who have had the privilege of serving and working with, and whose support and friendship over all those years is the only reason I'm able to stand here tonight. Many of those people are back here. Without them, if I was a success, any sort of a success, they had a major part in my success. And I wish I could name them one by one, but after 44 years, it would probably take two hours, and you're going to miss the All-Star game. Just know that they know who they are, and I've always loved and appreciated every single thing they did for me. In closing, the 29-year-old, greenest grass young lawyer who raised his right hand and swore to preserve and protect the charter of the city of Milford, and to honestly do the duties of Milford Law Director, never in my wildest dreams could I ever imagine this moment. Lastly, let me just say I'm honored. I appreciate it. Thank you. And now, I'm going to sit down and shut the hell up.
I see that Gene Schmidt came in. Would you like to come up and make a presentation?
I think, Mike, you're summoned.
Yeah, you're summoned back up again, Mike, sorry.
Well, Mike, you need your exercise. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm flattered.
No, I'm honored to know you, because this is a very well-run city, and it's not just the people on the dais that make it work right. It's the law director that steers them in the right direction.
Did everybody hear that?
I did. I did.
I was a township trustee for 11 years, and we had a law director. Praise God. Otherwise, I would have probably done some stupid things. I would have liked to have done them, but I didn't do them because the law director said, "You can't do it."
I can't say the same thing about stupidity.
Anyway, I actually came here a month ago because I thought my staff had you on the calendar for last month, so I have a lot of practice in this. Anyway, this is accommodation on behalf of the House of Representatives for being honored by the city of Milford for more than four... That's 40 years.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. That's a lifetime of service to this city. I don't know how you're going to replace him.
I got a long way to go.
The only reason I have to press that long is I work cheap.
You work cheap. The law director, because you clearly understand not only the law as it relates to local government, but the law as it relates to this community. I can't say enough of the 44 years. I just know that I'm always thrilled to say my district has Milford in it because of you, and congratulations.
I'm flattered. Thank you so much.
Any council comments, Ralph?
Well, I could go on and on. Knew, growing up on Main Street, a few doors down from one Mr. Manier's office, I had the privilege and honor to call him not only colleague when we were on council, but also a true friend. So, Mike, you and your family, thank you for all you gave to this city. I think this city is so indebted to your hard work and where we were and where we are today. Every time I walk through the Mike Manier doorway, I'll, you know, take a moment, and nothing but good thoughts. So, thank you.
Mayor, may I? I know when I came on for this term almost four years ago, that's right about when Mike was leaving. I wanted to tell you, Brian, that I was not going to get to be sworn in from Mike Manier. So, I was grateful for that and grateful for all you've done.
So, since I currently get paid by the hour, we'll keep this thing going. Mike, thank you, because when you left, you were kind enough to talk to me about the position, to ask me questions, to provide advice. And then, what I think may be the hardest thing to do for somebody who is as successful as you are, who's had a room named after them, and not many of us do, you're just right across the street, but you stayed out of the way. And you didn't, you didn't, you were supportive. That's what I mean. You didn't stay out of the way. You were supportive. And you gave me the best piece of advice, I don't know if you remember it, but you gave me the best piece of advice when I talked about interviewing for this position. And I said, "I look at my role as an official. You don't talk about officiating in a game unless it's bad. If it's good, you never talk about the officiating. When it's bad, that's all you talk about. That's my job as a law director. I'm the official. If you're talking about my job, I'm not doing it well. If you're talking about what they're doing, and we're talking about the game, then I'm doing exactly what I do and should do well." And I said I wanted a team mentality, and my job was to serve. My job was to stay out of the way. And you said with that attitude, they'll love that. And I appreciated that candor and that advice, and I thank you very much. I've enjoyed our lunches even after the fact. I appreciate what you've done. I've gone back to look through your... You gave me a big box of files, right? I'm of the age that I still love big boxes of files. I don't need it on... Yeah, well, I'll take whatever you got. But I do appreciate it, and thank you, Mike. It's been... They are big shoes to fill. They're a big chair to sit in. They're a big room to take care of, and I'm honored that I was the guy in the next chair. Thank you.
I just, one thing I have to respond to that.
Lawyers, yeah. Judge, you better get in and break it up.
Talk about not coming back. You guaranteed that I'm going to come to every council meeting, every mayor's court, just so I can walk through those doors. Walk through the doors and then leave. And I very much remiss in Jamie. Jamie was so generous in saying I'm one of his mentors. I don't know about that, but I do know that I was here when he was a part-time patrolman. I've seen him blossom into the chief of police. I was here every step of the way. No one has more professional integrity and honesty and professionalism as Jamie. Not only were Jamie and I lucky to work for the city, but you are extremely lucky to have him as your chief, so.
Thank you. Well, it's with honor that we will hang that plaque. And again, just thank you for all your service, and thank you for all of you for coming to support him tonight. We do have a very long meeting, so you are welcome to sneak out and take a cookie on your way if you'd like. You're also welcome to stay if you'd like.
And the mass exodus.
This is when they should put the "Let's All Go to the Lobby" sign on the streaming feed.
It's time for the commercial break.
Yes. Not to mingle in the hall like this.
Oh, yeah, that's for him.
Did you receive? Thank you, Lou.
Piece of cake, buddy. Standing on your head.
Yes. Mr. Manier, would you like a quick family picture up here? The Manier family, calling the Manier family back up here.
They all tried to escape.
You guys want to stand up here in the front, and we'll get out of the way, taking out the logo?
Paging Mike Manier. Blue light special, Mike Manier.
Do you want to grab the plaque and hold it?
Mike Manier. Blue light special, Mike Manier. All right, here we go.
Come up here and have a picture.
Amy was taking pictures.
Amy, do you want to take the picture? Amy or Jackie, do you want to take the picture for them? Thank you.
Yeah.
He has to have that blue folder. That's like part of the...
He's a young guy in the picture.
Oh, no, I suck at tips. Yes.
I'll come visit.
Really? No.
How you doing, girl?
Whatever.
It's nice. Very nice.
You're on...
All that excitement.
Look at some... And you have the floor. Here in the city of... Cities. Cars and kiosks. Cities, municipalities. To serve, paying out... Believe the... Not exist. A big problem is the fact that digital for your local businesses is broken. Now, the main issue, which disproportionately affects... Four dollars that they spend on digital is wasted on ad fraud. It's a big effect to somebody like, you know, the local coffee shop, maybe not Kroger as much. Local businesses need advertising that reaches real customers when they're ready to engage, not bots and fake clicks. Now, the existing solutions in the marketplace miss the mark on both of these problems. Now, I mentioned they're operating on outdated and expensive, inefficient software, and the entire industry has kind of turned their monetization model into charging increased SaaS fees and ongoing setup fees and monthly fees along with the software and hardware solutions. On top of that, they come with complex installations, of course, those high ongoing costs, but most importantly, no community benefit outside of just accepting that parking payment. We believe that cities need integrated solutions that serve multiple stakeholders while reducing overall costs and complexity. That's where we come in. We are a complete solution for modern cities. For your city, we offer, of course, the entire parking payment software suite at no cost. That's the backend management, payments, enforcement, permits, everything that you need from a parking solution, we offer it to you in one package. For businesses, we give them the ability to now leverage those parking payments as a consumer acquisition tool, so they can target real customers in real time and use it to their advantage. For residents, they now receive a modern parking application that provides them added benefits, again, outside of just accepting that parking payment. Of course, we wish to provide them with a modern solution that integrates modern benefits of software that's common in the marketplace today. We are not just another parking app. We are focused on being a tool for economic development in your city. The main focus of how we are doing this is by creating a symbiotic ecosystem where we take local businesses and connect them with the consumers through parking locations. We have created a proximity-based advertising network that utilizes location-based financial transactions through parking to deliver highly targeted and contextually aware advertisements to real customers where those businesses know where they are and when they are there. They're highly, highly targeted. Now, this comes with a lot of added benefits. Of course, first and foremost, these businesses are able to connect with real consumers. They know this because they are going through financial transactions, and they know where those consumers are and when they're there, because it is all through a location-based transaction, be it parking. Now, we use this as a leverage point to drive business to new developers, or perhaps a struggling business, or a new business opens up in the city of Milford. We can use this as a tool to ensure that they get visibility and foot traffic. And outside of that, we also, you know, use it to advertise events or emergencies within your city. So, you know, for example, you guys, I believe, just had a, was it a concert here recently, or the Fourth of July Parade? I can't remember which one it was. But you're able to notify people of upcoming events, similar to how a business would advertise. And our focus for the consumer is to elevate the parking experience in Milford. Now, of course, we offer a seamless payment experience. We are not forced to download yet another parking app. That is a very large prevailing issue that we hear in a lot of cities. Nobody likes to be forced to take 10 minutes to download another parking app. It's not fun. Now, of course, the main focus of this is the proximity-based offers that allow you to connect with different businesses throughout the city of Milford and see what's there, especially if you're a new customer coming in from out of town. You're not going to be familiar with the businesses that are in Milford. This helps you get familiar and gives those businesses the ability to advertise directly to you and incentivize you to come in and shop. And we are also integrating things down the line with, by the end of the year, such as loyalty rewards. It's a very common thing in the marketplace today in most commerce, but it has been completely neglected in the tire parking payments industry. We see this as not only a reward to consumers that come in and pay to park and shop at your local businesses, but it's also an incentive for them to come back and shop again. We want to turn every parking session into an opportunity to explore what Milford has to offer. Now, one of the main focuses is on reducing costs and friction overall. So, from the enforcement perspective, most applications would require you to pay for an additional software fee if you want to use enforcement, which is issuing violations. That would come with integrating with multiple hardware solutions like ticket printers and things that increase costs and friction. We, on the other hand, do it a lot more efficiently, in my opinion. So, for example, when a ticket is issued through our system, we obviously record and keep track of all of that, but we provide the user with a very, very simple way to pay, being notified by SMS or email notification, the same way that we notify them of their parking transaction ending or delivering them a receipt. The violation can be delivered to that user directly, and they can click on the link and pay with an Apple Pay or Google Pay within a couple clicks. within a couple clicks in less than 30 seconds, as opposed to the alternative of getting a ticket off of your window, trying to go find that on some old outdated payment site, type in a bunch of information that takes you 10 minutes to pay for a parking ticket. Now, on the innovation front, another thing that we are integrating down the line that I think would be quite relevant to Milford specifically is the ability to get rid of parking tickets as a consumer in numerous ways. One, you could, of course, pay that violation, which I'm sure we're all familiar with, but what I think is a very cool feature, especially for your local businesses, would be the ability to get rid of that parking ticket by, say, if the ticket's $20, going and spending that $20 at a local business, rather than just paying that ticket directly. This points to direct economic development and business development for your local businesses. Now, one thing that I want to highlight and reiterate, it costs nothing. It is completely free for you to use. There is $0 in setup fees or monthly fees or ongoing SaaS fees of any kind, and we provide the entire software suite, which is management, payments, enforcement, and permits, completely free for you to use. Typically, I have to repeat that because sometimes people don't believe me. Now, Benjamin and I discussed the kiosk option, because I know you guys had mentioned that in a prior meeting. So, I wanted to give you a little bit of high-level information on that to help you inform your decision. And now, of course, we can integrate with kiosks. We are doing that in other cities. But from a price perspective, they'll cost anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000 per kiosk. That does not include the ongoing SaaS fees that they typically charge or any maintenance included with that. And now, we got this data from ABM, who's one of the largest parking operators in the United States. We're doing a lot of business with them in the Cincinnati area. Of all the lots that they manage where they have both kiosks and the payment applications, the kiosks represent about 5% of total transaction volume. So, five out of every 100 customers actually pay through that kiosk. Now, the trend in the marketplace today is that many cities are moving towards app-only solutions because of those few reasons, their low utilization and high cost. Now, if you do decide to go with a kiosk option, we're, we're happy to help facilitate that, and my recommendation would be to purchase through ABM, since they are a large national company. They get better deals, which will get that price of a kiosk down closer to around $8,000, rather than the higher, around $10,000. So, with that, I'll wrap it up, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. So, you said for payment, it's relatively easy because a text message or email link is sent to the person who's parking.
For a parking ticket, yes.
For a parking ticket. The question I have, based on, I guess, my mother and her generation, who every day is forwarding multiple emails that are asking her to click a link to pay, and she's not sure whether it's a scam or not. My concern is, oh, not concern, I guess my question is, I guess I don't really know what my question is, right? But how do we, we have problems with elder, you know, being targeted for fraud in our community, right? So, we hear this all the time from the chief, that people are losing all this money. My concern with sending them a link or an email for a payment link is them thinking it's another scam, right? And then, I, I guess I have other questions for when we discuss this during committee of a whole, but is there anything in that SMS or email, I guess, payment link that would make our residents more secure in knowing that it's official, I guess?
Yes, sir. That's a good question. So, whenever a violation is issued, it's typically done through your phone or a tablet as an enforcement officer or attendant, whatever you would like to call it. We prompt them to take a picture that is attached to that violation for both your records and for the customer's records, so they can see it as evidence whenever they're issued that violation. And it's also the same, the same name, the same link, at the same design as the whole payment application, so it's all consistent, and I think that evidence is probably the main source of... Trying to think of the best word. It'll make them feel that it's real, because it's a picture of their car.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was done, thank you.
How many spots are we talking about? Do we know altogether? I don't remember that number.
It's roughly around 70, I believe.
70, okay. Is it 24 hours a day? Is that what your projection is? Or is that, that's obviously, I assume, we control that.
Correct, you control everything.
All right, and then, have you done a projection for what you think?
On revenue?
Yes.
So, from the data that I have and other lots that we operate in, I typically like to discount it, just to be conservative with it. It depends on what you charge. So, I know Benjamin, Benjamin and I have discussed different rates you could charge based on the market. So, say you wanted to charge a dollar per hour. It's a conservative estimate that you would likely generate around 40 transactions per spot per month. And then, it, of course, depends on how long those people would pay to park. You know, my assumption is that you could very reasonably expect to retain about a couple dollars per transaction on average. So, it, it ends up to be a sizable amount of revenue that's generated.
And then, in your experience, do you have demand parking or rates? Do you suggest that? Have you instituted that in other places that you use? You know, Monday at 2:00 in the afternoon is different than Saturday night at 9:00 at night.
Yes, yeah, most lots that we work with implement that. Cities are starting to do the same thing as well. It's very common, it's slower to get there in cities because I believe it's typically related to ordinance issues, because they have to publicly disclose in an ordinance what they charge. Again, it's different everywhere, but it is a very common thing, especially in private lots, to charge more on the weekends, and I, and I think it's probably something that every consumer would be, feel very consistent with the market.
And, because my wife's sitting in the audience, I may or might have had an issue with this not too long ago. When you park a car and, and you don't pay for parking, is there a camera there that takes a picture of that car?
That would be up to you. So, that's typically referred to as LPR technology. You know, there's some cities, or not cities, more so private operators that are now implementing LPR technology that automatically sends tickets out through the mail. My personal recommendation, I would not do that. I think, you know, there's a fine line that you have to walk between working with consumers, but then also you, you have to keep people honest, hence the reason of issuing a violation in the first place. I think it typically, you know, represents a better, better enforcement tactic with the consumers of not doing LPR, because, again, like you mentioned, sometimes there might be an older lady that, or a man that can't, doesn't figure it out or just doesn't even notice it. That can happen. And those things are very rigid with how they function. You know, so there's not, there's not any nuance to a camera system, I should say. So, it's going to automatically send everything, but it is something that we are working with through CDC and, and, what is the other one? Urban sites on, on implementing.
So, then, I'm a little confused by when you say a ticket. So, that means I paid for parking, I said I was going to be there an hour, and I'm there three hours or something, is that?
Sure.
Is, is that where the ticket would then be generated? Only after I or someone entered that information, then it's monitored by when I moved my car, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a good question. So, you, it depends on how you do it from, you know, if you have a physical person out there, of course, they would have to, you know, have your information to send the message. You know, you can still leave a ticket on there to inform them.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. You, you had mentioned getting a ticket.
Uh huh.
So, that ticket, I assume, is generated after I, say, I, I assume you prepay for the amount of time you think you're going to be there, correct?
Yes.
So, I, I go over that. That's these tickets you're referring to, right?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's, that would only be generated after someone enters that information.
Correct, or you could also, you know, if somebody parks halfway into the entry and exit lane, you know, there, there's a lot of nuances with it, but typically, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Want more discussion during committee of the whole?
Correct, yep.
All right.
Awesome, thanks, Grant. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from June 17th?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Stain.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
And that takes us to financial statements. Do I have a motion to adopt the May 2025 financial statement?
So moved.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, let's do a reverse before we go to the next one. We have on the agenda the notice of the public hearing. I know at the last meeting, it was all, all the changes that were discussed. Is there anybody here tonight that wants to comment on the public hearing?
Yes, come on up, take your... I didn't plan on speaking, but provoked a thought in my head. Amy Velardo, Toll Big Oak. So, that made me think, so, correct me if I'm wrong, when you were talking about a violation, Mr. Parrish, you indicated that you were worried about the authenticity of the email? So, is there an image of the car that comes through to authenticate the, the violation? Because what I'm talking about is, our son Max got, I got an email from, a scam from a toll that had a picture of him, you know what I'm talking about, right? And so, I get this in the mail, and I'm like, Max, what are you doing in Louisville? And you didn't pay this toll. And he said, I don't know what you're talking about, I didn't go. And the whole thing was a scam, but it looked legit. If I didn't know any better, I would have paid the ticket. So, my question was based off your question of authenticity, and how does someone know if they're receiving the violation, if that is authentic? Is that, can you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, yes.
So, for instance, we can't 100% of the time tell everybody that it's real. They're going to have to, you know, use the evidence in front of them to determine. Cities that we work with. Website where they're able to pay there. Now, we see that most of the time, the evidence is of your car in a parking lot where you know that you also parked, and it's also linked back to the same website in which you paid on as well. So, through the application, all the, all the branding, all the marketing is very consistent. It's all the same thing. It'll be issued from the city of Milford. You'll know all that documentation of information of when it was issued, the pictures, timestamped and geo-stamped, and the reasoning. They can leave remarks as to why the ticket was issued. As much information as we can put forward for people to be comfortable with it. We, I think we've done a lot on that aspect of giving them the, the complete and total capability to give them as much information as...
And respectfully, this just seems complicated for several generations, just my opinion.
But they would have had to have entered that information, so they knew that they paid for parking.
Correct.
They, they know, unlike what you're referring to, the difference, I believe, would be that I or any one of us entered our license plate, took a picture, or however that works, so that they know that they were parking. So, and then, when they don't, so, I, you know, again, I, I don't dispute that there's a lot of scams out there, that, especially with the toll booths and, and things like that, but...
Yeah, that's a new one I haven't heard of, but toll booths.
Oh, yeah.
I saw this picture of him, him driving a car.
Yeah.
Down, down the alley.
What, what happens if somebody does not have a smartphone? I mean, since...
They get free parking.
Well, and, and I think that's... I, I think that's where the, the kiosk comes into play, but also, I, if you don't have a smartphone, then you don't have the ability to utilize the lot, in some respects.
And go park somewhere else.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you, we all bring up a valid point in terms of the scams, and I, I think that's something that we have to continue to monitor, not only with this particular topic, but across the board, because you look at something simple like water bills. If municipalities were to just send digital bills, we would send a, an enormous amount of money through postage, time, and, and so forth, and that's something that is continually pushed around the, the state, is how is it that we can send water bills on, via email and, and stuff of that nature? And so, this, it's a good conversation to have, because I think that's something that we need to continue to do, is we spend a lot of money sending out paper stuff, and is there a way that we can be more efficient? But also, at the same time, as, as the world becomes more digitized, then, of course, there's more exposure to those scams. So, I, I think that's something that we have to figure out, but as we've discussed, you know, you have to insert your information, if there's, there's evidence that shows, you know, you're within that lot. You know, I'm not sure what else we can really do at this point. Not to say that that's the, the only solutions, but I think that's something that we have to look at and, and consider further. But to answer that question, I, I think the, the kiosk, that's, that's, that's the benefit of having that, is they have the ability to not have to use a smartphone.
Okay, and again, we'll discuss this further during council of the whole, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Back to the public hearing, is there anyone?
Is it about this right now?
Nope, this is, this is about the public hearing right now. Yeah, so we'll come back to that during council of the whole. This is just the public hearing, is there anybody here that wants to comment on the public hearing?
Did we open up the public hearing?
We've got to open up, yeah, we haven't done that.
Sorry about that.
That's why I thought we were...
It is. The, the public hearing is for the charter. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You're fine.
Motion to open the public hearing. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
I was not at the last meeting, but I think you went over all of the charter changes. Do you want to comment on that?
That's correct, Mayor. I, again, in the intervening, what, five weeks since the last meeting, I've not heard anything else. I know Mr. Velardo had a comment about the spending authority, which I'm aware from anybody else about any other charter provision, so just wanted to make council aware of my knowledge.
So, no one from the audience wants to comment on the charter? So, I guess we will close the public hearing? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No, I, 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 I'll go back to my comment. I am passionate that I cannot support this if it's going to have that high spending limit. I, I, I think that that's something that we need to either discuss, and if you all don't agree with me, that's fine, but I'm just going to say my objection that I believe that spending limit needs to cap somewhere around $25,000. I think that's a significant increase, and that's a comfortable level for me. And I, I just feel that as the city grows and continues to grow, and again, I've mentioned it to our current city manager, that's no reflection on, on him by any sense of the man, but to raise it up to that threshold, I believe, is $75,000.
Seventy-eight and change now.
Seventy-eight and change, and it continues to go up.
Right.
That's, that's well above anything we've ever done, and though I don't want to get to the case where we come to a meeting and realize that we spent $65,000 on something that we, you know, would be well in that authority, but it's just not something that I, I think is prudent and should be in the charter at this time. So, $25,000 is my, is my personal cap.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the 75 or 78,000. I think just because costs have gone up, so I think raising it to 15 or 20, we might as not, might as well not raise it, because it's not going to make much change. I guess I trust that, I mean, things that, things he's going to spend money on should have been in the budget or will have been in the budget.
Should have been.
That could even be part of the provision, maybe, that if it's over 50 or something, that he does have to come to council, but it's going to come through council, through the budget time. So, I'm comfortable with that.
I think the thing that I would throw in here is tying it to state law, which is what the current proposal is. How difficult it is and should be to change the city charter, why set it at 25 and not tie it to that law to where if we do set it at 25, in five, 10, 15, 20 years, another council has to come back and go back to the voters to change the law, when there is a law that exists in state law to account for these type of things that we could simply tie our city to and rely on our state legislature and their processes to set a law that, that sets a reasonable limit? I understand your concerns, and they're valid concerns. I just, with how hard it is to get through this process, why would we make it to where we're just kicking it down the road for another council to have to struggle when there's a provision in state law that helps us kind of address it on a ongoing basis that adjusts?
If we follow the state law, Mr. Pacheco, and do that, like, then could we create our own ordinance that has maybe a stipulation that if it's over 40,000, whatever it might be, that he has to bring it to council? But that way, it's in the charter just to follow the state law, and we don't worry about charter changes?
Well, so, it, it does. The, the charter would set that limit, so if it's in the charter, you can't pass an ordinance that would require him to do less than that, because it's in the charter, because, you know, if you will... know, if you will, the charter is your constitution, so that governs, and an ordinance that it's inconsistent with the charter doesn't essentially exist. The charter provision.
But not to interrupt, you could do it the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do it the other way. We could do it now, we don't have to change it. We could do it that we give him spending authority rate.
Not no now, because it's limited to 7,500 specifically in the charter, so you couldn't, you couldn't, now if you said, you know, the managers, you're still going to have to change the charter.
Okay.
But what you could say for that is, the minimum amount the manager can spend shall be governed by ordinance. But then you got to pass an ordinance, or he can't spend a dime. So, and that may be fine, I'm not sugge, let's be clear.
And again, I get it's the law, but personally, I think there's a lot of bad laws out here. Local government, and we're run by local government, and we have our own rules, because it's what fits our community. What they do in Columbus doesn't necessarily resonate what they do here in our local communities. And I believe our job as council members, the biggest job we have is to control the budget, and to make sure that spending is in line, checks and balances. And I believe by having a reasonable, and again, 25,000, I believe is still a reasonable amount of money, that is one's authority. And again, I polled a lot of our local communities that are neighbors, and they, most of those don't have thresholds above 15,000. So it's not unprecedented to have a lower amount, and again, I won't support the changes if it is that higher limit, so I'll just leave it at that.
Could we, could we also, in the proposed changes, make his limit a percentage of the amount covered by that common law? So if that law right now says $78,000, and we set our charter to say he's got authority to spend up to 33 and 1/3% of the amount covered by that law, which would get close to your number, and then still allow that number to adjust without changing the charter based on the law that exists, but still keep his limit lower? Could we do that?
The answer is yes. The math would just figure it out, and I, we'd have to change the, which is fine. I'm not saying we have to, like, oh, we have to, it's like, we just, as a matter of architecture, we have to change what's been submitted, because that's what's going to be attached to go, depending on what council does, and I don't know what council is going to do, if council passes that, we have to have the changes redlined to go off to the board of elections. So that's, that's just. That's all.
Yeah, because I'm fine with the higher amount, partly because I don't want in five years to have to change the charter again, because we realize 25,000 is not enough to buy anything, so.
But if there was a percentage, like Christopher said, then that's going to adjust, and I think it's a high amount, as Ralph said, and it's nothing against Benjamin, it's future city managers, future council, it's, as we know, it takes a long time for the charter to change.
It does appear, though, many municipalities are going through this same process as we are too. Like I just saw, New Carlyle did 50,000 is their spending limit, and they're about the same size as our population is for the city of Milford.
So, again, because I do seven other jurisdictions, I will seem to give you this experience, please, I don't want anybody, particularly on council, but any of the public, I don't have my thumb on the scale, I don't care, this is your government, right? My experience with adjoining cities, the cities that I represent, Blue Ash, Silverden, Deer Park, all have the minimum threshold required by law, which is 75 or 78. Townships by statute can't do more than $15,000, whether they're 100,000, whether they're 100. So that's just the state of the law, municipalities, which you are, versus townships, which is, you know, some of your, some of your neighbors, Miami, et cetera, you know your neighbors better than me. So that means nothing other than that's the experience that I have, and you. Appreciate that or not, as you will.
Well, is this under?
It is, you're coming back to that, yeah.
That's what I thought, so we can discuss it more then?
And if you're going to change.
If you're going to change, we're going to.
We've got to do it, you could, you could, yeah, you do it then, and then we can, when you come back to it, well, you'd have to authorize me to amend the document that we've put out there, so everybody knows what we're doing.
If we were to make that amendment, do we have to hold more public hearings?
Okay. Nope.
Okay, well, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved? Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, that takes us back to financial statements, to receive the June, do I have a motion to receive the June 2025 financial statement?
So moved? Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to public comments. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Ben Redman, 833 Riverside Drive. Yeah, I was just here specifically staying for the parking discussion, and it was good to hear, there was some rumors swirling around Main Street, and I was asked to come down here to get some clarity. One of the rumors was that every parking spot was going to be charged, so it's good to know that you guys are possibly just starting with the two parking lots. I had my specific questions, where obviously, as many of you know, I own a building right next to that parking lot, and I have many customers who come in for less than five minutes to get a cup of coffee or something, so I was just wondering how that would affect, you know, my, my customer base, or other people who are just stopping, and maybe they're just running into, the candle store is right next to us, or running across the street to get something from Tickle Sweet. I was just curious what the city was thinking for the people who are maybe just popping in or something.
That's a good question. I'm not sure that I speak on behalf of council, but I think that's one of the unique abilities, is we have the ability to sort of create those quote unquote limits. I've spoken with a few businesses on Main Street, I eventually want to make a D H M A to sort of discuss this, no matter which direction we go. Upfront, you know, they, every business I've talked to, which hasn't been all of them, but a few of them, and they've been specifically restaurants, or breweries, distilleries, so forth, they have expressed the same concerns regarding just any sort of enforcement, metering and so forth. Then when I bring up the marketing side of things, they seem to be more supportive of that, but I think that's where we have to, as a council, well, not a council, but as city manager and council, work, work with the businesses and figure out, is there a solution that works for everyone? Because there are those short-term situations in which it makes sense, and once again, I don't speak on behalf of council, but that's ultimately, that's not what we're trying to accomplish in terms of our enforcement, is that five-minute stop, right? So I think there's something that we could do to partner with the businesses and figure out, is there, is there situations in which we feel that if it's a five or 10 minutes, is that acceptable? Is it, we just approach it, you know, across the board, so that way there's no, well, I was here for six minutes, and now, now we're battling over one minute, right?
But don't you envision a, we could, whether it's eight, 10, 12, whatever spots that, whatever your hours are, you know, kind of with the hours, you know, during these hours, the first 15 minutes or, you know, or something along that lines, so that, to your point, we don't want to hinder any business people from stopping in for, what is it, on Fridays you have those, those very small little breakfast sandwiches.
Sandwiches, yeah, the breados, or you know, even, and I see a lot of people who will park just to run to the governor, they've called ahead, they're going to park in the lot real quick and run across the street, grab their food and come back.
But I don't think that's unprecedented, to Benjamin's point, that, you know, signage that, you know, carry out, you know, or however you want to do it, and whether you designate certain spots for those during these restricted hours, after hours, it's, you know, they're all paid spots, or something along that lines. I would certainly not be opposed to that.
Or a 15-minute grace period, you know?
Yeah.
I was going to say too, I talked, I apologize, I don't remember the gentleman's name from the company, but he did say that they are working, because I said, that's what my question was, and he said, oh, well, we're working right now to do like a 15-minute thing on their whole app, because that's one of the questions they're getting to a lot, is how to make it work.
Like a 15-minute, like, grace period, or 15-minute paid?
No, grace period. Yeah, yeah, you're not, you're not paid or anything. My other question was for, is, I don't think he answered, but who's enforcing it? Or how's, is it someone from the city who's going around? Do they, do they have a paid employee who monitors the lot? Or how does enforcement actually take place?
I think you're getting deputized.
A lot of people think it's my lot already, so I might as well go out there and tell people to move.
That's a good question, I think that's something we'll have to figure out, and what we have to do on this body is figure out, you know, one of the big pros of that program is the ability to say, okay, instead of a parking ticket, you know, you can spend money and it gets you out of it. That's a total policy thing, I don't think we can just do that tomorrow. But I think that's sort of the goal, and, you know, we don't, we don't want to be out there writing tickets 24/7. We don't even have enough spots to have a ticket person. I think we got to figure out, how is it that we can, we still have to enforce it, because otherwise it's pointless, but trying to figure out what that looks like from an enforcement side of things, because I think that is a huge part of that, so that's my answer, that's not a direct answer to you, so I apologize.
No, that's fine, I mean, I think, I wasn't expecting actually any concrete answers today too, I was just here to kind of explore and just hear, because again, the rumors swirling, some people were telling me like, well, it's, they're voting tonight, this is a done deal, you know, all city, all downtown Milford's going to be paid parking. And I was like, what? I don't think that's the case. So like I said, it's good for me to go back and share with people that it's really just going to be the two lots to start with and see. And then the other question was kind of representing employees too, because, you know, I think that has been one of the issues for a long time, is employees parking like right in front of businesses and stuff too, but I would assume a lot of, a variety of employees, obviously some of my employees are parking in the lot, but I know other employees from the hair salons and other places, restaurants, parking the lots too. I didn't know if the city was any consideration for them, or for what they do, or maybe they just moved, you know, all those people just park on the street then, so I don't know if that creates another issue, because now they're just parking in front of the businesses. So that was something else just asked about, there's probably over 200-plus employees who work on Main Street who utilize either of those lots, so just wondering what, you know, what their situation would be like if now they have to pay regularly to come to work.
I think the goal was to kind of, to get them not to park in the lots, to park the block over or something, so that those lots are open and to turn them over faster.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, that's always been my, my thought, if this was to be implemented, it is nothing against the employees, but they're there for six, eight hours, and they're taking up primo parking, so that parking is available for businesses, that a customer can come in, spend hour, two hours, whatever, and then turn over the spots. So Ben, we don't want to be as a deterrent, I think, for an employee, but that was, it's always been my kind of understanding, how this program can work, is to free up vital parking for customers, paying customers.
Yeah, totally makes sense, it's so tricky, because like I said, again, those employees will probably just go then park on the street in front of the businesses, so.
Well, and I think that's another thing.
A lot of them already do.
Yeah. But I think that's where we need to either limit those an hour, I mean, whether it's a few hours or whatever, but we need to either, through education on our part with the businesses, that employees are vital and very important, but they can't park on Main Street.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, I think the company you picked looks excellent, I was on their website earlier, I think it has a lot of pros for the city to be using and stuff, and, I mean, my ears really perked up too, when you're saying, instead of paying the parking ticket, you can just come to my store and spend $20. That seems like a very interesting and novel new idea, so.
Ben will be handing out tickets.
Strict enforcement, strict enforcement.
He's going on to that law.
But thank you guys so much, I mean, I, when I was on council, obviously, parking was discussed a lot, and I'm sure it was discussed way before I've been on council too, so I know it's always a challenging issue for any municipality, so thank you in this current council for trying to tackle that issue.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Anybody else in the public like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us to Mr. Gunderson and the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Boy, do we need to close the public meeting?
Oh, we don't.
We did.
Oh, we did, okay.
That was, that was regular public comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. To start the staff report, city staff has held several meetings with our city lobbyists to discuss various issues related to House and Senate bills, I provided that on the sheet. A lot of it has to do with the marijuana host fee, which is actually one of the resolutions tonight, as well as House Bill 335 eliminating the inside millage, that's also on the agenda. We have been in discussion regarding House Bill 113, which would restrict or would put some obstacles. To pass residential incentives, and that would be required by the school board for approval. My personal opinion is, we need to be able to operate, the more obstacles we have, the harder it is for us. So we did submit opposition against that. Also, in conjunction with our city lobbyists, we met with Congressman Taylor's office, more specifically Joe Abner, to discuss funding for projects in Milford. Two of the projects. V bulb installation. We submitted for a congressional earmark, it's about a $560,000 project, we received no funding, we did receive a grant not long after, that subsidized that by about 50%, but we wanted to pursue that further with him and see if there's any other potential funding through subcommittee. So it was a great discussion, we were able to discuss other projects and other funding opportunities, so we're grateful for that visit, and we expect another visit here soon. City staff also met with the Ohio Economic Development Association President David Zach to discuss economic development projects, as well as potential funding opportunities, as we look to accomplish projects throughout the city. To pursue grant opportunities and low-interest loan opportunities, whether it's infrastructure or other related items, so to get a better understanding of what's coming, what the trends are throughout the state, it was a, I thought, a very productive meeting. City staff met with our utility rate study consultant, Raftillis. I plan to provide the presentation to council later this week, so that way we can sort of dissect that before they present in August, the plan is for them to present in August. I do want to discuss that a little bit, not too in-depth, but, you know, we're at a point now in which our utility funds are in really poor standing, and quite frankly, it's unacceptable for us to have even gotten to that point. We're to the point in which we are going to have to increase the rates drastically, and we're still going to have very little revenue. So the mindset that we take is, we either increase the rates a large amount and hope that we get enough money to continue to pursue these projects, or we raise the rates to, you know, really stabilize, we'll still grow our revenues in terms of capital expenses, but any large infrastructure project is going to have to be subsidized through incentives, grants, loans, or the general fund. That's where we're at. And when you see the presentation. That you hope you'd never have to do again, but that's where we're at. And I'm not going to go any further, because I don't want to get too deep into this, because I want council to be able to look at it before we have a discussion, but it's going to be a time in which we have to really strategize, and we have to figure out what is the best path forward with that, fully knowing that we're in a situation that is difficult to climb out of. Moving on. Five-point irrigation bids have been received and are under review, we received two bids, both relatively close in terms of the price point, so we are going to do some due diligence and will report back to council. We also received a estimate for the splash pad, as I put in my, one of my last emails to council, we have a surface on there that simply isn't suitable, and probably should not have been placed to begin with, according to the contractor. So what we're looking at doing is replacing it with a surface that is for splash pads that has sustainability and longevity, and has the grip that's needed to ensure people aren't falling, and we're going to do it right. So that came back at about 35,000, so I don't want to get too deep into conversation, that'll sort of tie into the five-point irrigation, because we have a part grant, well, actually two-part grants, and I would like to tap into those and see if we can't offset some of these costs. The nuisance and zoning software is making steady progress and will be live shortly. What's unique about the zoning is, it's a software I've used at almost every municipality I've worked at, I really like it, it's very usable. I've worked at. I really like it. It's very usable. It also allows for the community to go on and search active cases. So if they have a question about the status of something or they want to submit, um, pictures and, and a violation, they have the ability to do that. On the zoning side of things, um, we'll have the capabilities in which people will be able to submit zoning, uh, applications online. It'll funnel into the system and then we can address it internally and then send it out from there. So once again, we're trying to digitize some of this stuff. So we're avoiding, uh, some of the paper. City staff met with the, uh, Milford Fire Department to continue discussions on the fire department expansion. Uh, we're still making way on that. Uh, city staff met with the American Legion, discussed deterioration of the riverbank. We are going to get all the necessary parties together to really discuss that. I know that's an issue. Um, as I told the Legion, unfortunately, that will not be solved overnight, nor is that only, uh, the city and Legion partnership. There's, there's far more, uh, parties that need to be involved in, and it's going to be a, I believe, a significant monetary, uh, project. So we're gonna go down that path, figure out what the proper steps are to, to fix that situation and then establish a game plan from there. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring up, we've had some ribbon cuttings here recently. We've had seniors helping seniors. We've had the Butler Tech Driving School, Rancho Grande, and the Meridian Bioscience. I apologize if I did not say that correctly. Uh, the rest of the report, I've got all the other departments. And then upcoming dates, I've got, apologize I'm flipping to it. Uh, I assume Chief is gonna talk about this to some extent, but on August 5th, we have our National Night Out. I won't go too deep because I don't want to steal his thunder. Um, we've got Storytime on August 6th, uh, through the Claremont County Library. We've got the Kiwanis Fest on August 9th. We've got the Milford Community Sustainability Meeting, August 11th. We've got the Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting on August 12th. We've got the Planning Commission Meeting on August 12th. We've got Tree Commission Meeting on August 13th. And we've got our next council meeting on August 19th. That is all I have unless there's any questions.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to Chief Mills and the police report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. You have my June monthly report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to, to answer those. Um, otherwise, yes, as Mr. Gunderson said, I'd like to remind the public of a couple of, uh, special events we have. National Night Out. Uh, this year will be held at Home Depot in Miami Township from 6 to 8. It's always the first Tuesday in August. So hope to see a good turnout there. We typically have a really good turnout at that. And I also want to remind the public of our annual Citizens Police Academy. This is our 12th year hosting that. Uh, Council Member Cooper's been through it and she was in one of the last few classes, I believe, weren't you?
Two years ago.
Years ago. So it's, unfortunately, it's still one of our best kept secrets. We keep trying to get the word out. It's completely free to residents. There really is no catch. Uh, it's 10 weeks. There's no attendance requirement. That's a question I get quite often. And the answer to that is, yeah, you, you can miss as many as you need to. Bless you. And, um, we'll even let you come back next year and attend, uh, many of the classes that you weren't able to make in your academy. So if you're interested, stop by the, uh, the lobby. There's an application there. I brought some tonight. I really missed my opportunity. I should have been promoting this when we had the big crowd tonight. Uh, or you can get them off our website. And as always, you can reach out to me at j mills at milfordohio.org. Classes begin September 3rd for that.
What? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to Chief Baird and Fire and EMS.
Mayor, if I may, before Chief gets up here, uh, the Citizens Police Academy, I've, I've done that at two municipalities now. And, and I, I want to give Chief credit. He, I know he does a, an excellent job, I've heard. But, uh, to the community, I, I think that's such an excellent opportunity to not only get exposure to what the police department is, how they operate on a day-to-day, but it is, it's also a good opportunity to sort of interact with our officers. And, uh, I just really like the program. I'm excited. I think hopefully Chief Mills saved me a spot, but, um, I encourage everyone to join and, uh, so that's all I got. Take it for what it's worth. Thanks.
Thank you.
I always need somebody to volunteer for the taser display.
Brian, you're first on the list.
Yeah, right.
Actually signing up.
Lamborghini.
Yeah, right.
Thank you for the opportunity. I know you have a busy night, so I'll keep my brief. Um, I, I do a weekly report. It ends up in a culmination of information in the city managers', uh, managers' reports. So, um, I'll refer you to that for ongoing stuff with the fire department. We were thrilled to welcome four new, uh, members to the department today in their first day of orientation. Uh, two part-time employees, Matthew Bowman and Jacob Bellcamp, and two volunteers, Braden Coulter, who's been one of our cadets for quite a long time, and John Gatch, Catch from Terrace Park, running with Terrace Park and us. Um, and with today, new onboarding slash orientation process. That was a direct result of District Chief Thiel's two and a half years in the Ohio Fire Executive Program. That was his major project was revamping, uh, our, uh, onboarding process along with my son Alex Baird, one of the career people. Um, his Leadership Academy project was a portion of Chief Thiel's work. Uh, they, they were built from the very beginning to work together. And we started that, uh, today, the new process today. We struggled for years with a really good orientation process. And I can tell you, um, with the time that those two put into that, it better than employees, the first good getting them. So I want to credit for new people, but also to our existing staff for helping make those four peoples transition into the department, uh, a little, a little bit more smooth.
I, I just wanted to make a quick comment, Chief. Um, I had the distinct pleasure of visiting the fire station. My car seat installation. And, uh, Mr. Miller came out and not only did a great job of, uh, reassuring me and I even offered to send a note back to my wife assuring her I had not installed them correct, or I had installed them correctly, which was great. But, uh, he took the time to explain everything that you guys checked out on those. And it was really educational. I just thought he handled it really well. So not only to say thank you, but also to remind all our citizens that that service does exist at the fire station. Pass my
handful of car seats in stock from Children's Hospital. That's, that's how this conduit works. They're the, um, they're the supplier, if you will. And, uh, I think they gave away everything except two booster seats that we had in stock. So she is working, she being Tessa Clifton, the firefighter in charge of the program, is working to restock. And we hope to have some car seats back in stock soon. But if anybody does need booster seats, we have two available. 7777. There's, they're not doing us any good, not doing anybody any good sitting in storage. So we want to get them, just like smoke detectors, we want to get them out there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to council comments. Anyone on council like to make a comment? I just have one. I want to give a shout out to one of the any business that we year over 50 years to finally close their door. Lose them. Years they dedicated to the city. That takes us to our committee of the whole meeting. Um, so I would like to call that to order. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Evans.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Here.
All right, public comment section. Anyone from the public like to make a comment about our, any of the items in the committee of the whole meeting? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to Mr. Gunderson.
Thanks. I guess it's called proximity now. Uh, my apologies. I, I didn't realize there's a, a change of the name. So Park Pay USA ordinance. Um, we are actually going to table this ordinance. We need to review the, the contract itself. So this gives us really good opportunity to truly consider this. Uh, I do want to discuss this though in, in good depth. I, I brought this up last meeting. I, I really want Grant to, to be present at the meeting so he could explain all the pros and, you know, that software. And, you know, the, they all in some form operate the same. What I really like is the ability for local businesses to be able to leverage that. And, and as I said previously, um, I've, I've spoken to a handful of businesses in which I've just simply introduced the idea of parking and, and monitoring that. And, and they've all, you know, sort of been hesitant. And, and then I say, well, what, what if you, you have the ability to leverage it from a marketing standpoint? And, and they, they all sort of lit up and they, they seem to be more receptive to that. I really like that ability. And, and it's, you know, it's, it's not just marketing it to, to whomever. It's, you, you can literally focus on a specific area. I know we only have two parking lots, so it's, you know, it's not that hard. But, um, and we can look to, you know, sort of give some of our businesses a sort of a, a, another avenue to get the, the word out. If it's a, they're running a special for the week or something like that. I just think it's a really a, a good tool. Um, so I brought this up last meeting. I, I brought up the idea of, of entertaining other softwares. I did not get the direction that, um, council necessarily wanted me to do that. But, um, since we gotta take a step back, I want to make sure we're all on the same page and, and moving forward with that. And, uh, so now I'll leave it up to, maybe we'll start with Christopher.
Sorry, sometimes I got a kid in class. So, things that occurred to me during this that I have questioned. The, the topic came up of, let's say someone doesn't have a smartphone, right? And the, the topic of, we could pay for a kiosk, which is $8,000. Um, but then for violations that are issued, instead of having to pay that, someone can simply walk into a business and spend money. Meanwhile, the city's still out $8,000. Which again, I don't know why, if I'm gonna go into, fill a sanctuary and spend hundreds of dollars on the fine stuff that Brad has in his store, why wouldn't I just violate parking and I'm gonna spend? To me, this is an expensive way for me to get a coupon, right? I'm just gonna park and tell you I'm gonna be there for an hour, take the fine of 40 bucks and go spend it at Brad's store and never pay the city and just park there as long as I want. Not me specific, but you see what I'm saying? Like, uh, somebody could, could do that. The other thing that kind of came up was those folks without, well, so with the folks without smartphones led me to thinking of handicap spaces in those lots, right? So if someone doesn't want to pay to park or for whatever reason can't afford to pay to park or doesn't have a smartphone and they're handicapped, where are they gonna park if we metered both of these lots, right? So I would like to think about that too. Um, I, I, and I, I understand kind of the angle they're taking with allowing people to go into businesses and spend money. And I'm all for driving people to our businesses. I want to make that clear. I'm just not a huge fan of letting people get out of breaking an ordinance because it's metered parking by ordinance, right? And then being able to just simply pay a private right? That rubs me the wrong way. And I know it's only parking and it's minor and it would be small amounts, but it still kind of rubs me the wrong way. That's all I've got.
So as it relates to the you know, that's, that's one of the struggles. It doesn't matter if, if you're wanting to do just the actual meters themselves, you know, municipality I worked at last, they had meters throughout the downtown. They had quarters, dimes and, and nickels. And I don't even know, I, I don't know how you, you could, well, if it didn't fit, that's the only reason you could tell. It was a giant disaster. And, and quite frankly, we're the only municipality in that county to even have parking meters. I left, they were gone and they, they felt strongly on. Um, but as we're working through the exercise, we were trying to determine because it didn't make sense to have all these different meters. So it was, how is it that we make this as accessible as possible? We all know that using a credit card, you know, but not, also not everyone carries cash, you know? So I guess my, my response is that of, you know, I, I'm trying to hit as many things as I can. You know, he brought up the statistic, which, um, you know, take it for what it's worth, but only 5% of the people actually use those kiosks. Um, I also think that, you know, we've taken the stance that the whole reason why we're going to monitor those parking lots is because of the convenience. And you're pa, you're paying a premium for those convenience, but also it helps with that of turning over the people that are staying there, you know, for the whole month. Um, so that's not really an answer. I guess that's sort of where my mindset is. And council can tell me, you know, give me better direction on that. And, um, you know, I, I'll have my marching orders and I can go from there. But that was the only thing that we could come up with. I shouldn't say the only thing, but that was one of the easiest things then that's been brought up was that of the kiosk. And that would eliminate, uh, people having to use a, a cellphone.
And to answer your question, uh, in a journeying community, when they first went to parking, they had the kiosks. They quickly removed all those kiosks because, hey, they were very expensive to maintain and they, they didn't see a cost benefit. Now it's just gone to an app. You pay it. It's, you know, uh, during the day, it's, it's, uh, not enforced per se, but, uh, it, it's, it's there. It, it, and it's, it's really accomplished. Uh, and I'm talking about the city of Loveland where they have a downtown, you know, uh, parking issue like, like most communities like that. But it's just really helped, um, turn over those, those closed parking. And the way theirs is set up, only the closed proximity parking is paid. All the outline lots, and we at this point don't have outline lots, but their outline lots are free to park.
Riverside Park.
Yeah, Riverside Park would be a perfect example. Where, and again, that's, that's, I think where we need to do a better directional signage so that people understand, uh, where parking is. And, uh, so I, I would not be in favor of getting kiosks, first of all. I, I don't see a cost benefit. I, I, I truly feel that if we go this route, it only enhances our ability to bring customers to our businesses. That, that's, that's the 100% goal of mine would be, it, it's not, uh, is a really even a revenue generator. I don't, I don't look at it as a revenue generator. I look at it as a, a way that we can help our businesses prosper by allowing, you know, I've heard Brad and others say it, you know, when someone parks, employer, whoever parks there for four, six hours, it is a major deterrent to people coming to those businesses. So this way, by having some lots that, that are paid parking, we then enhance our downtown community by, by turning over those parking spots. And, and hopefully, uh, the word gets out that people, you know, it's not our residents or I'm, it's not our residents really who, you know, uh, I think that they, they figured out where they're, where they can park, where, you know, but it's people who are coming into town, uh, maybe come here once a week, once every other week. And, um, when they start coming down, they realize, oh my gosh, there's parking, you know, it cost me $2. It cost me, you know, uh, but I, I, I've got a great parking spot. And, and to me, that would be the overall goal of what we would hope to accomplish here.
Another thing, through the software, when people enter their information, is there a way to track, like their zip codes? Do we know how many people are coming into town from outside of Milford or where they're coming from?
So within the app itself, I mean, it's no different than the other ones. You, you type in your, your, uh, make and model the car, your license plate, and, and then within your, your, um, information, you can save your credit card if you would like. So it does have that ability. Uh, before I get back to that question, I, I just want to take a step back. In terms of the kiosk, uh, I, I just want to make it clear, I, I'm not selling that by any means. I think it's kind of a waste of money myself. Uh, if council says do it, then I'll do it. But, um, I was trying to try to, I was trying to find another solution for those that don't have smartphones. So that was the only, uh, there, there was no pitch to that. So I just want to clarify that.
Well, and there's also street parking.
Yeah, right.
If you don't have a smartphone.
Right. You have, it's not every single spot.
Somebody in that group will have a smartphone.
Yeah. And, and that's what I'm trying to delicately say without saying, you're, you're, you can't park here. Uh, but I mean, it's no diff, different than anything else. If, if you don't want to pay, then, you know, if you don't want to pay for expensive groceries, you go to a grocery store, it's not as expensive. And it's just, I, I think it's natural. So, uh, to answer your question, I, I think you can, you, you can track that. I, I don't, you know, I, I told them that we don't want this to be a database that just collects all this information. So I, I don't think that it's, it's really targeted towards that. Really what they're collecting in terms of the data is if, if I park in Zone B and, and you're a business and you can directly market to Zone B. So they're only tracking, you know, who's in that, in that particular zone for that period of time. Other than that, um, there's no tracking other than what's saved within the system.
I just thought we need to kind of see like how many people were actually coming from outside into Milford to shop and park.
Yeah, just from the logistics.
Yeah. And I do, I mean, I like the fact that we can adjust the hours as, you know, we have that ability to play with that system.
Right.
And do like a grace period. You know, I think Ben brings up, you know, a really good point of, um, having that, which a lot of parking lots, you know, have that. Philly Market or, you know, a lot of them.
So we're not, we're gonna table that.
So we're, we're going to table the ordinance, but I just want to make sure we're working in the same direction. The only reason I'm tabling it is simply because we need to ensure that the contract is, uh, meets expectations, uh, from the legal council. In terms of the application itself and, and the, well, the application itself, we're, I, I'm fine to put this on the, the next agenda, assuming the contract lines up and, and start moving on it? Or how is it that I sit?
Well, I read the contract. I'm, I'm not a lawyer and I don't drive a Lamborghini, however. Um, but some of the cost, I, I, I had some questions on the cost and, and maybe we can discuss that later on. But, um, I saw it's 2.9% plus 50 cents per transaction. But he brought up these ads. Are we, is he selling ads to our customers or? Are we, is he selling ads to our customers, or, I, I didn't quite understand, I didn't see that in the, in the contract.
So how the ads work is, within the slides, I can.
But that's their revenue, we have nothing to do with it.
Correct, we don't, we don't get that, that's the, that's the ability for him to sell those ads and work with the, the businesses. In terms of the pricing itself, there is that, that pricing that's built in, which is why we, he sent me three different options for local area parking rates. So that would be additional to whatever we charge. But that's, you know, how, how this operates is, there, there's zero cost to, to get in, and there's, there's zero maintenance cost.
But the signage, because I, I.
That's, that's, that's free, that's part of it, that's part of the introduction. Yeah, the signage is part of it. But what I really like about this is the fact that, whatever, if, if it's a dollar, let's just say, he's, the, the company itself does not take the revenue at the end of the month, sort of like Rita, okay? So Rita collects the revenue, they take their, their, their fees, and then they'll send us a check after, you know, say, at the end of the month. They don't do that, they have a third-party company that processes that, sends off their, their fees and gives us our revenues, and it, it never even touches that company, and it rolls over, I think it's every forty-eight hours. So there is an arms-length way approach to that as well.
And then the, the, are we obligated to it for one year, is that the way I read that? So we're obligated, and then we have a sixty or ninety day, I don't remember the exact.
So if I remember correctly, it auto-renews for a period of one year. You would at any point through written notice, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but if I remember correctly from reading it, we could give them sixty days written notice prior to that renewal to opt out of that renewal, or at any time could give them ninety days written notice to exit the contract for no cause at all.
But we are obligated for the one year to start.
Yes.
Correct, yeah, that's what I thought.
Would this be a time to, to also revisit the two lots by the bank, to see if there's any reconfiguration that could get us some more spots, or just to, part of that doesn't seem very organized.
No. You need to take that berm out, I think you could really.
I think you could probably get a few more spots if it was re.
Reconfigured.
Repainted, yeah.
And I'm not opposed to, to, you know, whatever we have to do for a grace period, or something along that lines. I, I think that's, again, that, you don't want it to be a deterrent.
Well, and we already have fifteen minute parking in front of the dry cleaners. I mean, you know, so it's, it's almost be, you know, during their hours, or whatever, so it's, you know, just offering that.
And if you're around during that, that was, that was quite a. Everybody wants fifteen minute parking.
So that never should've happened.
Yeah, yeah, I would not recommend we ever do that again.
But, but I, but I think it's nice in the middle of the block, if, even if you're gonna go have boba tea, run in, you could fifteen minutes and get back.
All right.
Good, yes.
All right, moving on, thank you. Next one is the State Route twenty-eight money increase. This is very straightforward, we passed an ordinance previously. I thought I had enough money built into that, and turns out I need an extra twenty thousand. So we, we've got the, the money set aside for this, in fact, this is within the appropriation change. But I, I, I simply underbudgeted it with the ordinance, I, this is simply asking for an increase. I can walk through any more of the specifics, but it's a pretty straightforward ordinance there.
I'm sorry, what's the exact amount of the increase you're requesting?
It, it went from two seventy-five to two ninety-five.
Yeah, but there's, do we have, do we, I know we just got that, do we have that actually?
I think it, like, is this thirty-two thousand?
Yeah, that's the increase, right? That's, isn't that what this is? But there is an ordinance, a, I think Jackie sent it out.
Yes, that is correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so I guess, let me clarify. We were under budget, and then we got a last-second ordinance that put us over budget. So it, it, the last ordinance isn't, or, excuse me, the last invoice is not exactly twenty thousand. So with, with the exception of the last invoice, we would've been under the ordinance, but with that last invoice, it pushed us over. So that's why I need the additional twenty, even though the invoice is at thirty-two, or twenty-eight.
I guess from legislature, we just need to make an amendment to the ordinance, or is it new ordinance?
I would. Okay, so I would make a motion for the law director to draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend an additional twenty thousand dollars to complete spending on the Route twenty-eight repair situation.
Does that make it to, these ordinance says specific amount, if I'm not mistaken.
Two ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
That's two ninety-five in the ordinance, and then more.
Okay, so drafter, or, uh, ordinance, or, sorry, draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to spend the two ninety, two ninety-five, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars even, to account for the repairs on State Route twenty-eight. Amount not to exceed the two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Thank you for fixing that in the minutes, Jackie, I appreciate my word salad coming across straight when we reread this.
Second, anybody?
Oh, second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to the paving contract, some background on this, the city budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for the paving contract this year. We received a, a preliminary estimate, that was before it went out to bid, and the bid came in at about a hundred and ninety-five thousand. However, what we did was, not only did we use the difference in money to pay for State Route twenty-eight, what you have is an ordinance for two hundred and five thousand. We're, we were able to tack on to the regular paving to mill down that patched area of twenty-eight that was replaced, and we'll repave that so it's in good condition, it's, it's like a regular road. So that was a great way to be able to leverage another opportunity to significantly reduce the cost. So fast forward to now, because this is obviously above my spending limit, I know we budgeted for it, but I, I wanted to send this to council to get the approval for the two hundred and five thousand. That, once again, not only reflects that of the regular paving schedule, but also that of the ten-ish thousand that is going to be allocated towards the State Route twenty-eight repair.
So I would make a motion for the law director to draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for a total cost not to exceed two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and four cents for the purpose of paving streets in the city. Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to the appropriation changes, this is our third appropriation change this year. We've, we've had some changes, I'll, I'll highlight some noticeable ones. We have had to reduce the wages for planning and zoning. We, we went away with that position and created two positions that were ten ninety-nine employees, which means we can't take them out of wages. We have to take them out of, say, professional services. So we simply reduced it from wages and put it into professional services. We also changed a, an advance to the park fund to that of a transfer, that's a fundamental error. An advance has to be repaid, a transfer simply stays in the fund. So that was meant to stay into the parks fund, as that's something that we subsidize from the general fund. So we had to change that from an advance to a transfer. We put in the park mural at ten thousand, that was granted. We removed some other things, we had a, a GoFundMe line item that, we're unsure of why we had that, so we removed that from the, the appropriation change.
That just hit me where that's from.
Yeah, that's from the fundraiser when they did the.
To save the park.
To save the park, when we did the Milford Main, yes.
So that was supposed to be spent on something.
Spent something in five points at the park.
Okay.
I forgot about that until I just clicked.
Okay. Well, i, i, if.
We were gonna do some kind of a plaque or something on the building to commemorate, like, Milford Main School.
Okay.
Something there.
Well, then maybe we need to edit that and, and leave that in, or we can take it.
For the park fund.
Or put it in the park fund, and, and we can utilize in a different, I guess, expenditure, that's up to council. We, we've got two great.
It needs to stay in park.
Yeah, it needs to stay in park. I, that did not, when you mentioned that to me the other day, I did not even click where that would've come from until just now, when you said my five points.
So I, I, I guess that can stay in the park, it's just, we would be reducing that expenditure in terms of the GoFundMe line item, how this is written. So council can better direct me on that. Also, that of the State Route twenty-eight, because of the increase, we took that out of sewer water in, in street, or general, rather. We just reduced the, the subsidy for that fund. So that's, that's basically, and the other big one that I wanna throw out there is the Water Tower Improvement Fund. At the last appropriation change, we, we approved to send three million to the Water Tower Improvement Fund. That, that is inaccurate, we actually have the ability to request, so when we get an invoice, we have the ability to request the grant funds in accordance to the invoice. Once we receive those, then we can pay the invoice, so we do not have to pay it first and then rece, seek reimbursement. So that's a huge, a huge opportunity. We didn't transfer the three million right away, nor was that the plan, it was as needed, but that would reduce that transfer. So that, that's a nice item to have. The other biggest one is the Happy Hollow lift station out of the sewer fund. Why this is important is because, the be, the beginning of the year, we, we had the operating and we had the capital for water and sewer. Instead of doing that, we, we sort of combined it, and we just said, all of the revenues are going to go to the operating. So we had a couple, about a hundred and fifty thousand at the end of the year, that would be left in that sewer capital. So what we did is we had, the Happy Hollow was about a hundred and ten thousand, we just took it out of the sewer capital, and that will draw down that account, because it will no longer get revenues. So it, it was a good way to pay for that expenditure that doesn't affect the operational side. Other than that, I can answer any other questions, but that's, that's what we have.
That has no bearing, that lift station where the Mohawk hillside is failing, because that's the line that goes up that.
That is correct.
But that's not what we're talking about, that was strictly for the lift station.
That's simply for the lift station, yep.
I would make a motion for the law director to draft an ordinance amending appropriation ordinances twenty twenty-four dash three seventeen, twenty twenty-five dash three forty, and twenty twenty-five dash three fifty-one. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Thank you, and, and then to piggyback off of the appropriation change, cit, city budgeted for a salt truck this year. After further discussions with the service department, we decided to push that off until next year, which saved us about a hundred thousand dollars that we also spent on State Route twenty-eight, so poor Eddie. But instead, what we're looking at getting is a skid steer. The reason why we want a skid steer is it's very usable for us. There's a couple attachments we're looking at getting, a grinder for the roadway, so to be able to do small roadway repairs, a, a brush or a broom, that's very usable if it's a water leak to, to clear the surface. Up north, what we did is we actually ran a, a broom down the sidewalks in the downtown, and it helped clear stuff off. Then we sent the, the street sweeper in and sucked up all the stuff that was shot out, or, or spun out. And then also a, a brush, we'll call it a mower, brush attachment, so that way we can get some of the, if it's the trails or the roadways, we can get some of the stuff, you know, pushed back and, and cut down. So that. We were. Three estimates. In the budget that I gave Mr. Hackmeister, so that is.
Is that the one attachment, we already have a piece of equipment that grinds the roadway. We spent, I, I can't remember how, about two or three years ago. That grinds.
A skid steer, we can use that attachment, and, for example, there's the gentleman that came from, I, I believe it was Railroad Street. That, that's a good opportunity for us to grind that down, and, and we'll redo that surface. So we believe we can still use that attachment.
Okay.
We believe, totally different item. It's reflected both places.
In that case, I would make a motion for the law director to. Ordinance authorizing city manager to purchase a compact skid steer track loader from Bobcat Enterprises at a cost not to exceed ninety-four thousand.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you, and. Minder what this is, is it's a strategic plan for economic development purposes. It would highlight five key areas, being the downtown mixed-use, Main Street corridor, Lila Avenue corridor, Milford Parkway being out there by two seventy-five, as well as the Riverfront West, which is the little portion that's across the Little Miami River. This is, I think, a good opportunity. That we're trying to accomplish as a community. Areas envisioned as. Something that establishes comprehensive plan. How to give, give city staff a guiding. Us for the community. Us and figure out. Those areas, and then we can sort of consolidate all of the, the answers, and we can establish a plan. Ultimately, what this would do is this would sort of compound into a comprehensive plan thereafter.
I'd make a. To. To contract LLC to provide economic development services at a cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Yes.
Thank you for that, I just realized I went totally out of order, my apologies. I'll now turn over to the law director to discuss the charter. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Gunderson. So we just talked about the charter, we had a public hearing. The amount, good to go, because right now the ordinance is ready to go, and again, it's no problem, we can change it, we can change anything.
That we tie that spending rate to not to exceed thirty-five percent of the amount provided by the general law previously recommended. That still leaves our city manager with a substantial increase in their spending ability, but also addresses concerns from people-minded like my colleague, Mr. Velardo, and, and other citizens that have concerns. Again, a decent.
Twenty-seven thousand, five hundred in the first year.
See, I, I would be more.
I would recommend, I think we're just, I'm not.
I would go to more like fifty percent. I'm fine with the state number, too.
If I may, I, I, I'm not pushing back in any way, I, I think it's important to, I, I know it's, it's easy to focus on the number. I think we need to look at, what does that number truly represent in terms of the purchasing ability? I can't buy a police cruiser. Year would be over that limit. Think, once. I think we need to acknowledge, what is that true spending? What? Sure that we're adequate. Truly way too low, I, I can't pay for anything with that. So I just ask council. Um, I understand that council plays a role. Operationally, so. Can't operate efficiently, because I've got a low spending limit, and that's what council wants, fine. But I just wanna make sure that council's thinking about that, and once again, I don't say that in a condensating way, it's more of a just recommendation, take it for what it's worth, but, you know, to, to go up to, say, ten thousand, that would do nothing, right? And I know that's not what's on the table, but that does nothing for me, we might as well just leave it. I, I, I just hope council thinks about, what, what is the, the true ability with that number to purchase something? Because if we're only going up a, a small amount, then that doesn't really operationally benefit us as, as a team.
Well, I think whoever the city manager is, we should trust them, and if we all do our job and we're. And if we all do our job and we're reading the reports and the finance reports, then we should be on top of things and realize what he's spending anyway.
But I'm very confident that he can, he or she, whoever that may be, in the future, can adequately do their job like many predecessors have done, many other communities operate. We, with the exception of the summer months, we, we meet two times a month. That should be more than operationally efficient to come back with any additional spending request or anything of that nature and not operationally hinder one's ability to do their job. I don't, I don't think it's unprecedented, and I, I will echo my colleague Vice Mayor Parrish's sentiment that it be at that thirty-five percent rate, which again, will go up a year to year. And I think will put us in line with other communities and what their spending ability is. Again, to our Law Director's point, there are places, townships especially, much larger than ours, that have a much lower spending limit, and they operate very efficiently.
I think the other thing I would add, because I, I hope you guys have all realized in working with me, I try to approach everything with a completely blank slate, open mind. I think slate, blank slate may have been the wrong term to use there, because it's not blank, there, there is a lot going on up here. Thirty-five percent sounds good. I agree with fifty percent. I also would be okay with the state, and I know that puts me all over the place, right? I think the important thing to remember, though, is that we, in the Council manager form of government, right? To equate it to an organization, he's the CEO, we are the Board of Directors, right? So we're still going to have the oversight. We should have done our due diligence, and I know we have recently been burned in this, in making our selection of a person, we choose to sit in the City Manager position. So we should have a certain amount of faith. The word trust makes me uneasy when it comes to public money and public situations like that, because I don't think anybody with their hand in a public purse should be fully trusted, right? And not that that would, we wouldn't be putting you into that like we fully trust, sleep deprivation, everyone, I apologize. Thirty-five percent may be too low. I don't want to hamstring you to the point where, to your point, in the summer, we only meet once a month. Look at how long this meeting is, right? So we're here to meet for as long as it takes, and I'm not saying this in an interest of shortening meetings. I want us as a city to be able to compete hands down with literally any other town, city, village, municipality, what have you, in the state of Ohio, because I firmly believe we're the best place to live. And I want our City Manager to have as much capability to keep that going and improve upon what we've already got. So thirty-five percent might be too low. I can see concerns over going the full amount. Fifty percent might be a nice compromise.
This is not an easy change to make, that's the other point.
And I don't necessarily want to put into the charter a hard, cold twenty-five thousand dollars, because then somebody else has to figure out how to make that change. So I think, I think the answer still lies in tying it to that general law. I understand your concerns, I understand going full. I think somewhere in between a hundred percent and thirty-five percent is where we need to end up personally. This is, this is why this is not as easy as people think it is, right? Like, so to your point, if we went with the thirty-five percent, that puts us at how much again?
Twenty-seven, five.
Twenty-seven, five, right? So that's still not chump change, but in city operations, it kind of is. Seventy-eight
Prices are just increasing, they're not
And, but seventy-eight thousand may be a bit much, right? So anybody outside of me, Ralph, or Lisa, have like an idea of like percentage wise, we would be?
I would like to see it at fifty.
That's what I was, that's what I was gonna say, what gets us to fifty thousand with adjustments? So they Same with adjustments, whatever the state does. Yeah, that it continues going up as the state. I, I think that is a reasonable amount of, of money. That seems to be reasonable with other municipalities.
So, but worded in a way to where it would be a percentage that currently gives him that fifty thousand and then adjusts.
Adjust to.
I, I could get behind that.
So we're at fifty percent, is that what?
Whatever percentage comes out to be fifty grand, I think, and then it adjusts based on that law. Right now, it would be fifty grand based on the amount that law.
Fifty thousand dollars, I think you said fifty percent.
Sorry, well, that number also came out, but what she's saying is, whatever percentage equates to fifty thousand dollars based on what the current total is, that's the percentage we put in the wording, so the equivalent of fifty thousand dollars in the future, whatever that is, yeah.
But that still gives us substance, substantial amount that it's not coming every And it will continue to grow, as the state changes their number.
What is the state, three percent?
It's three percent every year.
Yeah, basically.
I'd be fine with that.
If I've done my math correctly, which is, that's sixty-four percent.
Can we just do sixty percent? That's forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. I'll concede to that.
I got it.
I'd be okay with that?
Sixty percent?
Sixty percent of what's allowed by that law?
That's forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Now, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. With that, and, and how it operates now is, I've got seventy-five hundred to, to, to spend, right, without going to Council. But I also have the ability, if the contract or something happens where it's an extra thousand dollars, as long as I'm within that seventy-five hundred, I don't have to go to Council. So if we write it the same way, that, that in effect would mean I would have fifty thousand, and if it increases within fifty thousand, I would have a hundred thousand. So I just want to make sure that's clear, if, if we need to change the wording on that, because that would change that number. If, if, if I communicated that clearly.
I would leave your capabilities the way they're currently written, giving you that emergency authority for that type of increase, which I believe is the intent behind what you're currently able to do. I would leave that alone. I would just increase what that current initial spending limit is, and then again.
The sixty percent of the state.
Yeah, and I would allow you to have that same power of, you know, emerg- City Manager have the same power in emergency to increase up to that, that same spending limit, is what I'd be okay with.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that.
Yeah, that was a good point. I'm fine with that.
Do we need to take a voice vote?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Can we call the rules? So we're, we're voting on changing to sixty percent of the state a lot?
And all other changes are okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everything else is The only thing we're changing.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor, so before, so what will that, now this will say is, when an expenditure exceeds the minimum, sixty percent of the minimum bidding amount required by general law, such expenditure shall be first authorized and directed by ordinance. So that's, that's really, that minor of a change, okay? That's easy. Done.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Anderson? Milford School District?
Yes, thank you. Jackie, is the Economic Development Plan, was that put in the packet? Am I missing that?
It was out of order. You were, when you already talked about the envisioned?
No.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I do need to, Mr. Gunderson brings up a good point now that I look at this, so I, I want to be clear. So, because we had, we had triggered it to the change. So the modification currently that Mr. Gunderson is talking about, which exceeds seventy-five hundred dollars, we were going to change to exceeding the minimum threshold. So if we're going to make that consistent, then what you would do is sixty percent for there as well. And what that's saying is, if it doesn't go above sixty percent on a modification, which is that, whatever that number, whatever that number was, six
Forty-six thousand.
Thank you. So if it doesn't exceed forty-six thousand, then Mr. Gunderson has that authority, which makes sense to me, if you're giving him that authority, who cares whether it makes sense to me, but if you're giving him that authority. All right, so I will change that then. Let me ask you, and I apologize, because I didn't remember how we wrote it that way. But then also, we would change that language to, when an expenditure exceeds sixty percent of the minimum bidding amount required by law, you already passed the one emotion for him, but I would need another one vis a vis, and these are all in eleven point oh nine of the charter. The minimum bidding amount for modifications to contracts and purchase orders without further advertising to bidding, and modifications to contracts and purchase orders which do not exceed the sixty percent threshold that you've just passed. I need that for those two provisions as well, and all I need is just a motion that says what I said, that, we, we all know that.
I would make a motion to say what Brian said.
I love that. I don't know that I can
I'm not sure I blame you.
That's tricky. Ms. Evans?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
I put a reluctant yes.
Mr. Price?
Caps.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
I would also just like to ask, did anyone get a little scared when our Law Director said, who cares if it makes sense to me?
Yeah, right, yeah, right. So I, I think the issue, and I appreciate Mr. Gunderson bringing that up, because we did, we did connect those provisions, so that'll make that all consistent. So the bottom line is, whatever expenditure he has, unless it otherwise qualifies as an emergency or otherwise qualifies for some exception in the charter, it's going to be, and I don't know why, having a brain, a forty, the forty-eight thousand dollar amount, which is sixty percent of the minimum threshold right now. All right. Thank you, sorry, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the overlay and approving the Economic Development Plan. Within the packet itself, there is a document that says discussion, and it discusses area development.
Yes.
What we are proposing is placing a, a residential TIF on the, on the property, be it TIF district, on the entirety of, of, of area development. Within this, this document, there's, there's a more in-depth sort of understanding or reasoning behind it, but the, the, the surface summary of it is, we, we've got concerns that some of the infrastructure issues are not going to be addressed, and, and one of the ways that we can pay for those costs is by leveraging an incentive. We have the ability to do that on both commercial and residential properties. What we are proposing is a ten-year seventy-five percent TIF. And once again, what that does is, anything in terms of the increased tax value, we would capture that, seventy-five percent of that for ten years. And those revenues must be used in that area for public improvement. So if it's a water line, sewer line, if it's stormwater, stuff of that nature, we have the ability to, to fund those projects and, and pull from those revenue sources. So what this accomplishes is, A, this is a, an avenue to, to address the, the ongoing concerns that we have. We also have the ability, or, or working from the utility rate study source section that I mentioned, we don't, we're, we're not flush with a, a ton of opportunities to, to address some of these concerns. So it's, it's extremely important to leverage these incentives as it, it allows for us to pull from other revenue sources and pay for these public improvements. So I, I don't need to continue cir- spinning circles, but basically, this is a, a summary of what that Economic Development Plan would be, as well as that of the timeline in which we would be completing the ordinance. All of the, this whole process is essentially laid out by the, the Ohio revised code, and there are certain deadlines that you have to meet in order to be in compliance, such as notifying the schools, such as notifying the, the residents that are within that district. And we'll also hold a public hearing, and then, then we would look to vote on the ordinance itself if, if Council decided to. So I feel very strongly about this. I think that this is something that's needed to address these concerns. This is one part of it, but I believe this is needed.
Any downside, in your opinion? I know your passion, and I believe you discussed this, or, you know, but
Well, there, there's one obvious downside when it comes to incentives, and it comes in, in the form of levies. So if there's any future levies, if it's a, a, not a renewal, but a, a replacement, for example, if it's a park levy, that area would be exempt from that levy on those, on those values. That is the, the quote unquote biggest downside. Other than that, I don't see any downside. We also have the ability, and, and quite frankly, Loveland did this, if, if we at any point said, hey, we no longer need this incentive, we can simply end it. And, and, and then we, we won't be collecting on that, and that would go to the remaining taxing districts, so we still have that ability. But there is significant, not only on area development itself, but even the stormwater in the contiguous area. There's, there's a ton of issues, so I think this sort of allows us to tackle a few challenges at the same time.
And maybe this isn't the exact place, but the performance bond, are we going to discuss that later, or does that have any effect of that, or?
Uh, yes, we'll discuss that later.
Okay.
In case, I would make a motion for the Law Director to draft an ordinance delineating and overlay in relation to the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District, adopting a written economic development plan as to the same, and setting the time and place of a public hearing. Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to the MOU with the Milford School District for the SRO. This is, once again, pretty straightforward. It's just the, the memorandum of understanding for the School Resource Officer that we provide. Chief is back there if there's any specifics. I didn't tee that up for him well enough, but this is something that we pass yearly, and, and we still feel that's an important position, important, important partnership to have with the school, so we just need to renew all of that, that agreement.
And correct, Marong, that's all funded through our allocation from our fund.
Half from the school, right?
Yeah, half from the school, but, but it comes out of the fund.
For the marijuana, correct.
I was going to use a different, you know, but yes, that's
I always did a visual.
I would make a motion that the Law Director draft an ordinance to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Milford Exempted Village School District for School Resource Officer Services. Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the MOU with the FC Cincinnati Mini Pitch. As a, we'll, we'll go back to the previous meeting. This was on the, the prior agenda. I wasn't particularly happy with the proposed MOU, and over the last month, we've had a lot of conversations, quite frankly, trying to iron this out. I finally feel, feel confident presenting this to Council. As a refresher, some of my biggest concerns was the useful life. It says it's no less than five years, no more than, at the time, twelve years. At that, after that initial first year, it would be up to us for the maintenance. Now, we, we, we don't expect any real expense in terms of the maintenance. It might be that of any debris, brushing the leaves off, you know, stuff of that nature, or blowing the leaves off. But other than that, we, we expect no real maintenance, simply because it's, it's one structure. There, there's not a whole lot of components. We want to add landscaping and so forth, but that's, that's rather minor. After that, that, that original year, then it would be up to the, to the city to cover any of those maintenance costs. However, if it was after the five years, then FC Cincinnati and the city would determine whether or not the useful life is, is still active. If not, then FC would cover the costs associated with that. Once again, we've, we've had significant back and forth regarding this, and what we, what we've established is, the useful life will be no less than five years, but it'll be no more than ten years. And once we have that useful life, what, what I did not want to get into is a, a negotiation with the foundation, FC Cincinnati Foundation, to determine what's their cost versus what's our cost. To me, that's, that's not a game I want to, I, I want to be involved in, and it, it puts us in an awkward spot. So what we agreed to was that they would, after the useful life, we would pay no more than twenty-five thousand dollars towards the replacement. Once again, this is a, almost a two-hundred thousand dollar structure, so there's, there's significant costs. They're donating that to us after, you know, the completion, but we still have the, the maintenance that's required. So in order to, you know, there's really no maintenance, it's, it's all minor maintenance under that twenty-five thousand. If the turf goes bad, then that's considered outside of its useful life, therefore, FC Cincinnati would replace that. So what they did is, they did actually reduce the, the no less than five years, but no greater than ten years, so they did shorten that, that useful life for us, which is nice. But I think it gives us a little exposure in terms of the, the maintenance costs at an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand. So I, I feel very strongly, I think this is an excellent asset for us in the parks, I think it'd be a good draw. I'm not a soccer person, but I do think that this would be a great thing to have in the park, and I think it would be, not every community has this. And in terms of the useful life, the first mini pitch was in 2019. They, they haven't had any issues in terms of the useful life to date. So it's hard to really establish and hone in on what that useful life is at this point. and hone in on what that useful life is at this point. The warranties only last a year for, for all of the, the equipment and, and materials and so forth. So, after that year, we would cover those costs up to twenty-five thousand, but I, I really believe it's a good partnership now, and, and that's why I'm, I'm bringing it to council for consideration.
Now, I, I'm in favor of the overall concept, but are you telling me that, under Milford's obligations, none of those have costs associated with them, or they're just so minimal that you don't feel?
I, I do believe we have minimal costs, with the exception of, and this has been part of it from the start, this is what they consider best practice, is the driveway. So, the temporary driveway to the actual site itself will, will produce that. So, we've got some extra, let's just call it gravel, that will lay down on a temporary basis. In fact, we've got a little bike event towards the, that end of the year, and they're actually wanting to utilize that gravel bikeway as part of their, their race beside the point. But that is, that's the real cost. Of course, the landscaping, that's something that's going to be part of it, so depending upon how, how grand we go with that. But other than that, I, I believe, once the structure is built, the, the costs are minimal, because once again, it's, it's really just one solid structure.
And then, this is an operational thing, because I, I don't quite understand what reasonable best efforts to ensure that there is a regular soccer programming of the project.
Yeah.
Is that a person, or persons?
So, how, how that operates is, FC Cincinnati, they, they get, i-if they want to use the, the mini pitch, they get the ability to do that without question. So, they are going to incorporate regular activity and regular programming within the mini pitch. They also look to partner with a local nonprofit to potentially drive more regular programming within the mini pitch itself. So, if it's, some of the examples are Chamber of Commerce, a, a school district, stuff of that nature. It's not a requirement, but we, we do our best to get the regular programming, because they want people to use the space.
But I guess my question is, who, who is that?
We're not like monitoring, like, "Oh, you get it from Tuesdays at five, and Wednesday..." I think we're not monitoring that one.
I show up, and someone else is using it, or?
Yeah.
I, I...
In my opinion, in terms of the rental, I, I see this no differently than a pavilion.
Okay.
I see it no different, but really, based off...
We handle that, though. That's what, that, I guess that's my question. Are we scheduling the use of this field?
So, in terms of FC Cincinnati, no. That, that, that first fifty percent, in terms of their programming, they handle themselves. Any programming that we want to do on, on our own, which is that partnership with the schools and the Chamber of Commerce, that would be something that we could be involved in. It's not a requirement, but they, they want that, because once again, they want the regular programming.
So, like, we could have it on our parks page, available to?
That's where I'm going with that.
To rent, and they would just contact, like, they would to do the pavilion, or?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so say soccer could, for a team?
Correct.
I guess my question is, are we giving Jackie more work?
Right.
That's where I'm going with this.
Just a little.
That's where I'm going with that question.
But other than that, it's a first-come, first-served kind of basis, right?
And, and based off of what I've seen in other communities, which I'm not there all the time, but I haven't seen, I mean, really, it's, it's, it's open to the public.
Okay.
There's not a, it's, it's not like a ball field.
You don't have to reserve it to use it.
No. More times...
Most of the time, it's open.
Yeah. Now, if there's a programming, then they're gonna reserve it. But other than that, it's open to the public.
And FC has the right to, to use it first?
Correct. Correct.
Which makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, looks good.
So, I'm making a motion for an ordinance to enter into MOU. Okay, so I would make a motion for the law director to draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an MOU with FC Cincinnati for the mini pitch. Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Amending ordinance twenty-five-three-five-three. This was our casualty insurance. What we, we made a mistake, and, and we forgot to put in the cybersecurity component, which is an additional eleven thousand, almost three hundred. So, we need to add that by amending the ordinance to ensure that we get that paid, and, and we have cybersecurity. So, that was our mistake. We're just simply amending it to include that.
So, I would make an, a motion that the law director draft an ordinance, amending ordinance number two-five-dash-three-five-three, to include provisions for cybersecurity. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is House Bill three-thirty-five opposition. This will sort of tie into Senate Bill fifty-six, support resolution. This is kind of a good opportunity for me to gauge council's comfort in terms of publicly opposing or supporting certain House bills. I've seen other municipalities do it. I think it's extremely important for us to make an effort to vocalize how we feel on certain legislations. Our lobbyist has been excellent, and, and I've worked closely with them to, you know, really get a good idea as to what's going through the legislative bodies, to ensure that we're up to speed on what is being presented. But I still think it's very important that council communicates their support or opposition for certain things that specifically affect us. I don't plan on bringing certain things, you know, we, we need to have, you know, four-inch grass at the park, you know, that's not something that I want to bring. I think it's something that really significantly affects us, two of which are House Bill three-thirty-five and Senate Bill fifty-six. Three-thirty-five is eliminating inside millage. That would drastically affect our, our revenues, as well as Senate Bill fifty-six being the marijuana and the host fee. You know, the, the direction that some of these bills are going, and in terms of eliminating income tax, the inside millage, it's gonna be very hard to operate as a local government, and I think it's extremely important to vocalize that on a public setting. One, because we're educating the community with what is going on at, at the State House, but we're also letting our legislators know, this is how we feel. You know, they can listen or not, but we're at least doing our part. So, these are two resolutions. One is against eliminating the inside millage. The other one is supporting the host fee for the marijuana revenues. I can answer any specific questions, but Jackie, both Jackie and Brian have done a, really a good job of laying out some of the, the, the elements to these, to these bills. I've also put in some of my update emails, the actual document that we've sent, either in support or opposition for these bills, so that way, council has an idea as to what is actually being sent versus just that of the legislation.
I would make a motion for the law director to draft a resolution opposing House Bill three-thirty-five, and urging the Ohio General Assembly to reject legislation that eliminates inside millage and transfers local budgetary authority to county budget commissions. And I would also make a motion that the law director draft a resolution in support of Senate Bill fifty-six in regards to thirty-six percent host community funding level in adult-use marijuana programs. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Is it?
I, I believe that's it.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
That takes us to new businesses. Mr. Pacheco, it's time for...
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-six-nine, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to spend an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars for real and present emerg, present emergency costs associated with the state route twenty-eight water and sewer main repair costs. Whereas, the city of Milford experienced unexpected waterline breaks and deterioration of sewer line that required emergency repairs. Whereas, in order to address the real and present emergency repairs caused by the unexpected waterline breaks, the city of Milford replaced four-hundred feet of infrastructure to eliminate aging and deteriorated infrastructure and replace the infrastructure. And whereas, the city of Milford has received dozens of bills totaling above and below the city manager's spending authority under the city charter, and whereas, Section eleven-point-oh-nine provides that competitive bidding is not required for such professional expert services or to address real or present emergencies like that caused by the waterline breaks. Now therefore, be ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section one. City council hereby authorizes the city manager to pay the costs associated with the emergency repairs of the state route twenty-eight water line and sewer line. City council recognizes the need for the emergency repairs, recognizes the efficiencies of passing an ordinance to pay all the costs, and permits the city manager to pay any of the bills associated with the projects at an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. Section two, under and in accordance with Sections twelve-point-oh-five and twelve-point-oh-seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance should be effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Now, I will make the motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-six-nine, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to spend an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand for real and present emergency costs associated with the state route twenty-eight water and sewer main repair costs.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-seventy, an ordinance to enter into an agreement with the Claremont County Board of Commissioners and Claremont County Engineer in the amount of two-hundred-five-three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars and four cents to participate in the twenty-twenty-five Claremont County Road Resurfacing Program. Now therefore, be ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section one. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with Claremont, with the Claremont County Board of Commissioners and the Claremont County Engineer in the amount of two-hundred-five-three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars and four cents to participate in the two-thousand-twenty-five Claremont County Road Resurfacing Program. The terms and conditions of this agreement are fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Section twelve-point-oh-three of the Milford City Charter. Section two, under and in accordance with Sections twelve-point-oh-five and twelve-point-oh-seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules, read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-seventy, an ordinance to enter into an agreement with the Claremont County Board of Commissioners and Claremont County Engineer in the amount of two-hundred-five-three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars and four cents to participate in the twenty-twenty-five Claremont County Road Resurfacing Program.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-seven-one, an ordinance amending appropriation ordinances twenty-twenty-four-dash-three-one-seven, and twenty-twenty-five-three-dash-four-zero, and twenty-twenty-five-dash-three-five-one. Now therefore, be ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section one. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city finance director to amend appropriation ordinances twenty-twenty-four-dash-three-seventeen and twenty-twenty-five-dash-three-forty and twenty-twenty-five-dash-three-five-one by increasing, or decreasing the individual items as set forth and listed on the chart attached here too and fully incorporated herein, as provided in Section twelve-point-oh-three of the Milford City Charter. Set of amendments total one million, twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred-eight dollars. Section two, under and in accordance with Sections eleven-point-oh-five and twelve-point-oh-five of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance requires only one reading and shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
An ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-seven-two, an ordinance authorizing city manager to purchase a compact skid steer track loader from Bobcat Enterprises at a cost not to exceed ninety-four thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-six dollars, sixty-eight cents. Now therefore, be ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section one. City manager is hereby authorized to purchase a compact skid steer track loader from Bobcat Enterprises for the service department at a cost not to exceed ninety-four thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-six dollars, sixty-eight cents. The quote is attached and fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Section twelve-point-oh-three of the Milford City Charter. Section two, under and in accordance with Section twelve-point-oh-five of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-seven-two, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase a compact skid steer track loader from Bobcat Enterprises at a cost not to exceed ninety-four thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-six dollars, sixty-eight cents.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
For this ordinance, based on what the committee of the whole previously passed, we will change those three sections previously noted under eleven-point-oh-nine to track sixty percent of the minimum amount required by general law, not as currently awarded. And then, that will then, that version, we will correct a version, and then that version will go to the respective boards of elections. Ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-seven-three, an ordinance providing for the submission of revisions to the city charter to the electors of Milford, Ohio. Whereas, Article sixteen of the charter provides for charter amendments to be submitted to the electorate, as provided for under the Ohio Constitution, and whereas, city councils discuss and determine that certain charter amendments should be proposed to the electorate for the betterment of the citizens of Milford and a more efficient government, and whereas, city council conducted a hearing and sought input for the proposed charter amendments for months, and whereas, city council hereby desires to place the attached proposed charter amendments on the ballot for the electorate, electorate to consider at the November twenty-twenty-five general election. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section one, that the attached charter revisions be submitted to a vote of the qualified electors of the city of Milford at an election to be held on Tuesday, the fourth day of November twenty-twenty-five, at the regular places of voting in Milford during the hours established by the Hamilton County, Ohio, and Claremont County, Ohio boards of elections pursuant to Article sixteen of the charter, Section two. That the ballot of said election shall, at the top thereof, be entitled, quote, "proposed charter revisions", close quote. Their under shall be printed, open quote. "A majority vote is necessary for adoption", close quote. To the left of such wording shall appear in boxes or otherwise appropriate space for indicating the words, open quote, "yes", close quote, and open quote, "no", close quote, and each voter shall vote by so indicating in one of the places so provided. Section three, that the clerk of council is hereby directed to mail a copy of the proposed charter revisions to each electorate whose name appears on the county's registration books at the last general election held in the city of Milford, Ohio, and has supplemented since such, such election at least thirty days before the date of such election. Section four, that the clerk of council is hereby directed to certify a copy of this ordinance to the board of elections of Hamilton County and Claremont County, Ohio, Section five, pursuant to and in accordance with Sections twelve-point-oh-five and twelve-point-oh-seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven three, an ordinance providing for the submission of revisions to the city charter to the electors of Milford, Ohio.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
So, Mayor and Council, just to be clear with that process, we will get a revised at per amendment or the Committee of the Whole, we will get those revised red lines as part of this. We'll submit this to the Board of Elections as soon as we do that. Jackie and I will work on that tomorrow, go down to the Board of Elections when it does, and then that, hopefully they'll then bless it and be ready to be on the ballot because we will have met the appropriate deadlines. If there's a problem, we will, it's one of the reasons why we do it in enough time. There's only a thirty-day window that you can pass these things. Why? Well, that's just what the Ohio Constitution framers said, so I'm not the person to direct that to, but that is the answer. And so if there's a problem, then the Board of Elections will let us know and that still gives us enough time to come back if we need to and have another meeting, special meeting to pass it if that's Council's choice, but we want to make sure we did it enough time. So, and then the last part of that process is in the ordinance. I've revealed that to you before in the public hearings and in other settings that we, under the Ohio Constitution, must mail a copy to every, I'm forgetting the actual Ohio constitutional term, but I believe it's registered voter in Milford and we will have to mail a copy of them. Why? Because that's what the Constitution says, so we will do that accordingly as well and that's also in the ordinance with that. Ordecence number twenty-five dash three seven four, an ordinance delineating an overlay in relation to the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District, adopting a written economic development plan as to the same, setting the time and, and setting the time and place of public hearing. For the record, I did not draft this, one of my partners did because, he doesn't have to read it. Whereas, section fifty-seven oh nine forty at sec of the Ohio Revised Code, the Municipal TIF Act, authorize municipalities to participate in a financing technique commonly known as tax increment financing, TIF. And whereas this city council, the City of Milford, is contemplating the creation of an incentive district as defined in section fifty-seven oh nine forty A five of the Municipal TIF Act, for certain parcels in the city is authorized under section fifty-seven oh nine point forty C of the Municipal TIF Act, the Garfield Avenue Incentive District. And whereas pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine point four zero C two of the Municipal TIF Act, this city council must conduct a public hearing on an ordinance proposed under section fifty-seven oh nine point four oh C one of the Municipal TIF Act, creating the Garfield Avenue Incentive District, which public hearing must be preceded by sufficient notice to every real property owner whose property is located within the boundaries of the Garfield Avenue Incentive District, and such notice must include a map of the Garfield Avenue Incentive District on which this city council must have delineated an overlay. And whereas this ordinance is a procedural ordinance delineating an overlay and adopting a written economic development plan such that this city council may in the future consider an ordinance proposed under section fifty-seven oh nine point four oh C one of the Municipal TIF Act establishing the Garfield Avenue Incentive District, the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance. And whereas such overlay must satisfy section fifty-seven oh nine point four zero A six of the Municipal TIF Act, namely that the overlay must cover an area of not more than three hundred acres that is a square or that is a rectangle having two longer sides that are not more than twice the length of the two shorter sides. And whereas the overlay depicted in exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, the overlay is drawn in accordance with the foregoing. And whereas the city engineer has certified that the public infrastructure serving the proposed incentive district is inadequate to meet the development needs of said district as evidenced by a written economic development plan, urban renewal plan for the district that has been adopted by the legislative authority of the subdivision. And whereas pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine point four oh A five little F of the Municipal TIF Act, one of the distress characteristics of an incentive district requires certification by the engineer for the city that the public infrastructure serving such incentive district is inadequate to meet the development needs of this incentive district as evidenced by a written economic development plan for the incentive district. And whereas in order to make the necessary certification for the Garfield Avenue Incentive District, the city engineer is required to consider a written economic development plan for the Garfield Avenue Incentive District adopted by this city council for such purposes. And whereas this city council has determined that it is necessary and appropriate and in the best interest of the city to adopt a written economic development plan for the Garfield Avenue Incentive District, a copy of which is provided in exhibit B attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, the economic development plan. Whereas, in order to consider the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF, the city must comply with the public hearing and notice provisions of sections fifty-seven oh nine point forty C and fifty-seven oh nine point forty D of the Municipal TIF Act. And the city intends to, one, set a time and place for a public hearing to occur not later than thirty days prior to adopting the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance, authorize the city's transmittal of notice of the public hearing and the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance to every real property owner whose property is located within the boundaries of the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District. And three, pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine point eight three of the Ohio Revised Code, authorize the city to transmit notice to the Board of Education for the Milford Exempted Village School District and the Board of Education for Great Oaks Career Campuses of the city's intention to adopt proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Milford, Ohio, with at least two-thirds of the members elected thereto concurring, section one. Pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine point forty A six of the Municipal TIF Act, this city council hereby delineates the overlay as it relates to and serves to further describe proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District, section two. Under section fifty-seven oh nine point four oh A five little F of the Municipal TIF Act, this city council hereby adopts the economic development plan in furtherance of its contemplation of the Garfield Avenue Incentive District. Section three, this city council thereby, hereby provides the following authorizations pursuant to the requirements of the Municipal TIF Act at each required act in order to establish the Garfield Avenue Incentive District pursuant to the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance as follows. Little A, this city council hereby authorizes the city manager, engineer to conduct a review of the economic development plan and upon such review certify the results of this, to this council pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine forty A five little F of the Municipal TIF Act. B, pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine point forty C two A of the Municipal TIF Act, this city council hereby determines that a public hearing with respect to this city council's formal adoption of the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District shall occur on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at a regularly scheduled meeting of this council at seven P M. in the council chambers, in the Mike Manier, Michael Manier council chambers of the Milford Municipal Building located at seventy forty-five Center Street, Milford, Ohio, four five one five zero, which such public hearing shall occur not later than thirty days prior to this city council's formal adoption of the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance. C, pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine forty C two little A of the Municipal TIF Act, this city council hereby authorizes the city manager, the clerk of council and their designees to send proper and timely notice by appropriate mailing to every real property owner whose property is located within the boundaries of the Garfield Avenue Incentive District subject of the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance, which such notice being delivered not later than thirty days prior to the public hearing set by this ordinance in section three be above. D, pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine point eight three of the Ohio Revised Code, this city council hereby authorizes the city manager, the clerk of council and their designees to send proper and timely notice to the Board of Education of the Milford Exempted Village School District and the Board of Education of the Great Oaks Career Campuses of this city council's intention to formally adopt the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance, which such notice being delivered not later than fourteen days prior to the date that this city council intends to consider adoption of the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF ordinance. Section four, that it is hereby found and determined that all former actions of this council concerning and related to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting and that all deliberations of the city council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements including section one twenty-one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code, section five under and in accordance with sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall be, become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Ooh, read it again, read it again. I really like the part where it defined a rectangle, but motion to suspend the rules and, motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Going over that one myself.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven four, an ordinance delineating an overlay in relation to the proposed Garfield Avenue Incentive District, adopting a written economic demand plan, development plan as to the same and setting the time and date of a public hearing.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes. It's the one pager.
Now the ones that Jackie, Jackie writes for me. Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven five, an ordinance to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Milford Exempted Village School District for School Resource Officer Services, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, section one. The Council of the City of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter in a memorandum of understanding with Milford Exempted Village School District for School Resource Officer Services for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. The terms and conditions of this agreement are fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter. Under and in accordance with sections under and in accordance with sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven five, an ordinance to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Milford Exempted Village School District for School Resource Officer Services.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with Envision Group LLC to provide economic development services at a cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio. Section one, city council hereby authorizes the city manager to contract with Envision Group LLC for economic development services at a cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars set forth in the attached scope and fee proposal. The attached proposal is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter. Section two, under and in accordance with sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with Envision Group LLC to provide economic development services at a cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
I guess we have to go slower.
Our next ordinance is...
An ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter in a memorandum of understanding with F.C. Cincinnati Foundation for the Construction of a Mini Pitch at Riverside Two. Whereas, City of Milford and F.C. Cincinnati Foundation have agreed to construct a mini pitch at Riverside Two for youth and adult recreational use to promote soccer and an active and healthy lifestyle within the community, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, section one. The Council of the City of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the F.C. Cincinnati Foundation for the Construction of a Mini Pitch. The attached memorandum is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter. Section two, under and in accordance with sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into the memorandum of understanding with F.C. Cincinnati Foundation for the Construction of a Mini Pitch at Riverside Two.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven eight, an ordinance amending ordinance twenty-five dash three five three with McGowan Governmental Underwriters for Property and Casualty Insurance for the City of Milford, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, section one. The Council of the City of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into and execute an agreement with McGowan Governmental Underwriters for Property and Casualty Insurance for the City of Milford from May thirteen, twenty twenty-five to May thirteen, twenty twenty-six from one hundred and two thousand oh ninety-seven dollars to one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars. The terms and conditions of the agreement are incorporated herein by reference pursuant to and in accordance with section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter, pursuant to and in accordance with sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to adopt. Or motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Sorry, everyone, sleep deprivation. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash three seven eight, an ordinance amending agreement ordinance, amending agreement ordinance twenty-five dash three five three with McGowan Governmental Underwriters for Property and Casualty Insurance for the City of Milford.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash six six six. A resolution opposing House Bill...
Is that allowed? Notice the lawyer pause.
Yeah, yeah, right. A resolution opposing House Bill three thirty-five You know, a resolution opposing House Bill three thirty-five and urging the Ohio General Assembly to reject legislation that eliminates inside millage and transfers local budgetary authority to county budget commissions. Whereas, House Bill three thirty-five introduced in the Ohio House of Representatives as the, quote, "Property Tax Relief Now Act" by this county's previous county auditor, proposes sweeping changes to the property tax system in Ohio, including elimination of unvoted inside millage for counties, municipalities, and school districts beginning in year twenty twenty-five. And whereas, inside millage is a longstanding and vital source of revenue that supports the provision of essential local services such as police and fire protection, mandatory contributions to the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund, infrastructure maintenance, and parks and recreation without the need for voter approval, and whereas, House Bill three thirty-five would centralize fiscal oversight by granting to unvoted county budget commissions new preemptive authority to limit local property tax rates, review and revise municipal budgets, and reduce levies based on the determination of carryover balances despite these commissions being largely unknown to the public and unelected by the residents they would impact. And whereas, provisions of House Bill three thirty-five would undermine the principle of local control by allowing a county-level body to override the budgetary decisions of locally elected officials, and reduce revenues approved by voters or budgeted based on local priorities, striking fiscal autonomy and these, from these measurably efficient institutions. And whereas, this legislation would create imminent fiscal uncertainty for cities and villages across Ohio, many of which have overwhelmingly and responsibly managed their finances and rely on inside millage to fund operations without asking for voters, without asking voters for additional taxes despite repeated reductions in local government funding from the state. And whereas, House Bill three thirty-five imposes these changes without providing revenue replacement by the state for municipalities, potentially threatening the delivery of basic public services and shifting the burden to income or sales tax. And whereas, the City of Milford supports and desires meaningful collaborative property tax reform, but believes House Bill three thirty-five's approach is unbalanced and detrimental to financial health and self-determination of all of Ohio's local governments, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of Milford, Ohio, City of Milford, Ohio, Section One, that the city council hereby expresses its strong opposition to House Bill three thirty-five